Mr. Skinner?
Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather. And we ask you for the courage, the wisdom, and the knowledge to go forward with this budget that will be presented tonight and do the will of the people. We ask you to keep our firemen safe, our policemen safe, EMS people safe. And we ask you to keep our military safe throughout the world. We ask that all our citizens are protected too. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen.
The flag of the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Could I have the floor computer, please? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, this afternoon, we have a new format for presentation of the consent agenda. I have a copy of this presentation that was handed out at your place. The items are shown on the slides so that folks can read them at home as they appear on our agenda with just a brief few words of explanation. Item two is approval of board minutes. Item three approves a mutual aid agreement, a new one between Fram and the city of Fredericksburg. Agreement's been updated and approved as deformed by the county attorney. Item four is approving application for FY16 grant funds for a victim witness program. Funding is $16,386. There is no local match on that grant. Item five, capital projects budget adjustments. These are multiple project transfers and appropriations for capital projects and utilities projects. And it returns project savings of $280,590 to the Utilities Capital Projects Fund. Item six is resolution of support for Senate Bill 85. This bill passed by the General Assembly would enable customer access to certain private utility company data. It was requested by Caroline County. Caroline County has a significant number of customers that are served, public water, I believe it is, by a utility company that is not a Caroline County utility. It's a private concern. There are 900 customers of the same company in Spotsylvania County. Adoption of Senate Bill 85 would enable those utility customers to get information about their utility company, just like our utility department provides information to our customers. Adopting this resolution would also add Senate Bill 85 to our legislative priorities list for this year. Item seven is acceptance of a grant from Petco, the Petco Foundation, a grant for the sheriff's office of $24,000 to provide spay neuter surgeries and rabies and distemper vaccines. There is no local match required. And there is a representative of Petco here with us this afternoon to present this grant to us and for a photo opportunity. Item eight is acceptance of a grant award for FY16 Rescue Squad Assistance. This is with a 50% local match. And it will provide funding to purchase 20 Life PAC 1,000 defibrillator units for the sheriff's office. Item nine, Rappahannock Area District carryover request. This will allow the health district to retain $12,468.71 in carryover funds. Item 10 is re-adoption of the board bylaws and rules of procedure to add board reports to the 6:00 PM agenda on second meeting of the month that we refer to as board work sessions. Item 11 is approval of the use of contingency funds for a risk and control maturity assessment. This will approve the use of $60,000 to perform a risk assessment aimed at identifying areas of risk in our IT system. Item 12 is use of contingency funds for baseball analysis performed by Davenport and Company. That's $23,750 from FY2016 funds. Item 13 is accept a grant award FY16 Rescue Squad Assistance Funds. And this requires a 50% local match. Funds are available for the match in Fram's budget. And it was approved by the finance committee. Item 17 is authorization for public hearing and ordinance to authorize the county participate in the VACO VML Investment Pool Trust Fund. Item 18, a proclamation commemorating African American History Month 2016. Item 19, the appointment of Xavier Richardson to the Rappahannock Central Rappahannock Regional Library Board by Mr. McLaughlin. And... Apologize, I short-wa-- no, I'm... I also have item 21, the appointment of William A. Harrington to the Rappahannock EMS Council Board of Directors. And item 22, the reappointment of Stephen L. Williams to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I'm sorry, we skipped item 20, which is reappointment of Alfred M. King to the Central Rappahannock Regional Library Board.
Are there any board members who would like to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? Mr. Ross?
Item 12 and item 18.
Pulling item 12 and 18, do we have a motion on the rest of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second, call the question.
Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Taylor, could you read the-- my computer's down if I could get some help here. So you could just read us through here, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, happy to. First of all, we would like to recognize the representative that is here from the Petco Foundation and Mr. Tidings, Officer Tidings from Animal Control for acceptance of the Petco grant. And the sheriff is here also. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Ashley Cox. I work at the Petco down in Harrison Crossing. So I'm just here as a representative from the Petco Foundation. We are super excited to be giving the Spotsylvania Animal Shelter this grant. The foundation works really hard to make sure only like the best organizations, the most organized, that are going to make the money go really far, get these donations from the Petco Foundation. And we're just super excited to donate. I'm super excited to be here to give it to the shelter, my store. Just at my location, works really hard to get donations. Every time we ask customers at the register, that's where the money is going. Doesn't just go to some big corporation, the money does. It falls her back down to the community. So I'm just excited and congratulations.
Mr. Taylor, do we accept that?
Please do, please come-- we do accept that grant.
We did accept it.
That was not pulled from the consent agenda, but I would love for you, the board, to stand, please, and well for a photo. Thank you. And again, thank you very much to Petco. Young lady from Petco? I'm sorry, I've already forgotten your name. But could you return to the podium just to tell us briefly? You did mention your store, but you did not tell us where your store is.
We're in the Harrison Crossing Shopping Center down Route 3.
Excellent.
Yep, and I'm the general manager of that store. I've been there for about a year. My staff is great, everybody should come shop there, we're all super nice. donate lots of money. But yeah, I'm just super excited to be a representative. And I was actually, I just told somebody, I was told 10 grand, so I got here and 24 is even better. So, cool.
It's wonderful, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem, have a wonderful meeting.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, was item 12, which is the use of contingency funds for baseball analysis performed by Davenport and Company. I apologize to the board that Mr. Cole, who was the lead agent for matters pertaining to baseball in my office, is not with us this evening. He's at the General Assembly. I did see that Courtney Rogers has come. And the board may wish to engage with Courtney on this item. Now that there are significant records that have been provided to the board and a communication from finance and that they include detail of the engagement that actually reached back to the fall of 2014 and through last summer.
Mr. Ross?
I guess my question is, and when we were doing this, I don't remember ever authorizing any expenditure for the work that Davenport did on the debt service. And my recollection was that it was covered underneath the current contract. So I have to say, I was surprised to see the amount of around $23,000 in our agenda in the finance committee's meeting minutes. So I just was wondering what the process was, what happened, what occurred, that this would just jump up as part of the baseball analysis.
Any other comments before? So, and I have to say similar things. When this was all being discussed, I was under the impression that it was part of the retainer, that Davenport, this was part of what we were paying Davenport to do. I wasn't aware that we were incurring another bill for the baseball analysis. Now, if there was, as we did with the lawyer, we took a vote on it in public and authorized spending up to $50,000. And I think we should have done the same for this, but we didn't do that. And I think that's a breakdown in process, and that needs to be fixed in the future. I would like us to go back and look at the numbers and make sure that we concur with the $23,000, if that's, you know, if that's a good number. And I'd like you to take that back, Mr. Taylor, and work on that. Any other comments on that? If not, could we table this until a future discussion? Till we have some more facts on the table?
That would be, that would be fine, Mr. Chairman. I know that there is an outstanding request that I have with the county attorney's office simply on the legalities of the matter. And we can bring that matter back, bring the item back when that opinion is obtained.
Okay, can we get a motion to table this?
I'm moved.
Second, okay, we'll call the question.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next item removed from the agenda, Mr. Chairman, was item 18, the proclamation pertaining to African American History Month 2016.
We gonna read that, do we have one?
Happy to read this, Mr. Chairman. A proclamation in honor of African American History Month, February 2016. Whereas nationally, African American History Month in February celebrates the contributions that African Americans have made to American history and their struggles for freedom and equality and deepens understanding of the nation's history. And whereas the nation, whereas the history of people of African heritage goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced and innovative societies in the history of human existence. And whereas throughout history, African Americans have courageously worn the American uniform while defending peace and liberty around the globe. And whereas every American can draw strength from the story of hard-won progress, which now only, which not only defines the African American experience, but also lies at the heart of the nation as a whole. And whereas during National African American History Month, the nation and the Commonwealth honor the achievements of African Americans and recognize a continued responsibility to strive for equality for all citizens. And whereas working together, federal, state, and local government, community organizations, and individual citizens will continue to foster hope and build a better tomorrow for all our children and our grandchildren, National African American History Month in February continues as a time for all Americans to reflect on the rich history, teachings, strength, perseverance, and abiding resolve of African Americans whose contributions are vast. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors during National African American History Month remembers and honors African Americans for their courage, dignity, and accomplishments, and for their contributions to the nation, the Commonwealth, and to the county. And be it further proclaimed in joining with the nation and the Commonwealth that the month of February 2016 shall be celebrated as African American History Month in the county of Spotsylvania.
Motion to approve.
For a second? Call the question.
Motion passes 7-0.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have public presentations. Is anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Is anybody would like to speak that has not signed up? Seeing none, we'll move on to beat out report.
Very good, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Going to give you your February report. First, I'll start off with the Battlefield District with Mr. Chris Yakubowski. There's one update I have to provide on the ongoings in your district, that the exit 126 IMR modification report, we met with FHWA, and we're going to discuss this at our February 11 Transportation Committee meeting, which will be this Thursday. There were some inquiries that we had from you last time. There was a request to review the signal and lane delineation at Levels and Courthouse. We said we were going to look into that. We're planning to install some delay delineation in the spring of this year to help with that curve as you're coming out of that intersection. There was a request to review the backups along South Point. We made some changes to that, but we're still going to have to review it to make sure that those changes are actually working with the rest of the system down there.
Thank you. And can I add one more to South Point Parkway? When you go on Route 1 northbound to make a left to get on South Point Parkway, that stacking lane, it's a double stacking lane. It's forever spilling over into the through lanes. And I noticed that the turn signal only gets about a third of the cars through. And so if we can take a look at that and see if we can open that up. Thank you.
Will do. Next, I'll move to the Berkeley District, Mr. Sebula. The updates I have for you since our last meeting, nothing has changed on the construction side or on the preliminary engineering side. We did have an inquiry from you that was a request to review drainage concerns along Marie Road and Courthouse Road. Our staff is reviewing that right now with environmental before we actually go out and perform some of the work.
Yes, I understand that the bridge on Fairview Road between 601 and Hartlow Road is in disrepair. We've discussed that earlier. I understand that there will be repair of that bridge. The timeframe, if I'm correct on this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the timeframe on that repair will be this coming summer when school is not in session. This will have a very negative effect on school buses if that's needed and also the people living in that area. I would suggest that if a prefab of that bridge is possible, that when you tear it down, you can slip the new one in. And hopefully, we can get a real quick turnaround on that because people, it's going to affect people's travel to work and so forth over there and a real problem for those residents.
Totally understand. As of right now, as you mentioned, we're planning to do that this summer after school is out. And we're planning to have the road closed between four to six weeks for those repairs.
Very good, hopefully four.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next, I'll go to Chancellor District for Chairman, Mr. McLaughlin. We had an inquiry to request a safety study on Orange Plank between Route 3 and Orange County Line. We're working with traffic engineering to try to have that study completed by the spring. Next, I'll move to the Cortlandt District, Mr. Ross. We had some inquiries to look at some patching locations on River Road. We've gone out and patched those locations. We also patched Old Plank, Orange Plank, and Elise Ford Road also. There was also a request to look at some access alternatives at the Family Dollar interest on Woodland Drive. We provided some concepts to county staff on our meeting yesterday. So we're working to also put together some estimates on how much that work will potentially cost.
Is that all you had for me?
Yes.
I had, I saw the report on River Road, I think it was published in October, that the county staff had sent over to me. It had a bunch of action items on there. When would those take place? Like it had cutting trees back and certain, like it actually listed out each tree to be cut back and?
Yeah, and that's what we're working with the county with because we don't necessarily have funds to go out and remove trees from, off of private property or that are outside of the right of way. So we work with the county to see if they can remove those trees.
Is there a timeline associated with that? Or is that something I should check with Mark on as we move forward on it?
There is no timeline, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, and then just to put a, plant a seed, in the June timeframe, I would like to have a town hall meeting to talk about traffic calming back on Norris Drive. So if there's a date in June that works better with you, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Next, I'll move to Lee Hill District for Mr. Skinner. I do have a report on preliminary engineering. We're looking at the Spotsylvania Avenue and Mine Road intersection improvements. That project is slated to be advertised this summer. That project will be adding a dedicated left turn lane to Spotsylvania Avenue onto Mine Road. We also had some inquiries. We also requested to look at Route 1 southbound and I-95 northbound intersection timings right there. Our signal staff kind of got behind because of the snowstorm, but they're scheduled to be out there on February 11 to look at that. There was also a request to review truck traffic concerns along Mine Road and some of the potential solutions. I'm working with traffic engineering. I think we've got some ideas on how we can assist with that.
Thank you, Sean, I appreciate that. Troy Tigner had an opportunity to meet with their general manager over there. And his attitude was basically, I've got better things to do with my time than to worry about truck traffic on Mine Road. And I got to tell you the truth, when you look at the recordings of that procedure many, many years ago, when we put that CVS up and we, it was People's Drugs, I believe, at that time. And then we changed the name to CVS. There was definitely an agreement that they would make right turns out to Route 2. Okay, and I constantly see them, and I've got pictures and trucks. And actually coming to this meeting today, truck number 110, which is probably the major, you know, coming out. But they're also using it to deliver their trucks coming off of Route 1 or coming off of Spotsylvania Avenue, turning right on Mine Road. And, you know, anytime somebody doesn't want to work with us after we have done, and we did put a little bit of money into that CVS building up there. I think we need to do something about it. If we'd like to sit down with the manager one more time, with maybe you and him, and we seriously need to keep traffic off of Mine Road and also off of Lansdowne Road. Because, as you know, it's a narrow road. Parks, the parks have that side of the road, so there's no expansion of that road. Especially during wet days and snowy days, trucks coming down that big hill can be very dangerous if they slide. So I'd appreciate you and I getting together, maybe, and talking about that and doing what you can. I know that Troy did send you that information. Did you, you did get it, didn't you?
I saw it, yes.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I'd like to know, too, is on Mine Road, as you go past Lansdowne Road, there are quite a few trees on the parkland that look like they're dead and could very possibly fall on top of Mine Road. Well, one of the constituents called the head park ranger for that, and they have given us permission. They said if you or your people will call him, and I will send you this number and the name, that you are more than welcome to go in and cut those down, if you can do that.
And they can't cut their own trees down?
I'm just, I'm telling you what was relayed to me. Okay, is it their responsibility to cut it down? I mean, if it, let's ask this, Sean, because that's a good question. I mean, I certainly know why you're asking the question. That comes down in a storm, who's going to clean it?
It comes down and it's impacting the road, then we're going to have to cut it out of the road and remove it off the side.
Okay, well, can I ask you, is it probably a little cheaper to go ahead and find these eight trees? And I think we've identified eight trees that look that they could cause. And the other question is, what happens if they come down and there's an accident?
Well, it's an act of God.
I understand that. But if somebody loses their lives, and we could have prevented--
At that point in time, if the tree comes down, it'd be an act of God. But I think we can partner with them to come up with a solution. If they've identified trees, we can have our arborist go out and see if these trees are actually in danger of coming down.
Thank you. And if we can get together, I'm not sure what your schedule like. Do you have any time this Thursday or Friday for, or one of your representatives?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can schedule that.
Okay, how about if I call you tomorrow?
That'll work.
And we'll set up a schedule like that?
Okay.
Okay, and my last question to you two, please, is you said for Mr. Yakubowski that on February 11, that's this Friday?
That's this Thursday at the Transportation Committee.
At the Transportation Committee meeting, okay. That we're going to discuss what the federal highways have already told us, correct? About the J-Ram?
Yes.
Okay. If you've got a few minutes after you get done with here, I would like to show you one quick thing in the back room. I've got a drawing I'd like to see, just get your opinion on this so that you might have some type of notice what I might present at that, come into that committee meeting on Thursday, okay? I appreciate that very much, thank you.
All right. Next, I'll go to Livingston District, which is Mr. Benton. You had an inquiry on when the Grand Brooks Road could be graded. We graded that road on February the 5th.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
And I bet you're wishing you could clone yourself a little bit with all these requests.
No, it's all part of the job. Last but not least, Mr. Trampy, Vice Chair. We had no updates really. The next thing that we have for you and your district is that the Harrison Road project will have the results back from the bids on February the 24th for that project. So hopefully, we'll see that project moving forward this spring. Now, some of the maintenance concerns, we've been in snow, so we're out doing a lot of pothole patching. And we've been out trying to pay attention to our unpaved roads. Recently, we did great Grand Brooks Road, Woolfolk Road, Shirley Road, and Wigglesworth Road. So we'll be continuing to work on those roads as weather permits. That concludes my reports. Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, Sean, I think it's in order to give you some thanks and praise to pass on to your cohorts, I'll put it in those terms, for all the hard work that was done during the snowstorm. I know, being in a rural district, normally, these are the roads that are often overlooked. But I am very, very pleased to say that in Berkeley District, only one road was missed. I was notified of that. You were notified of it. And within a few hours, that road was cleared. And the people that live there called me and just expressed their thanks. So, so much, thank you so much for all the hard work that your people put forward during this storm. Hope we don't have another, but I know you'll do a good job in the future. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes, sir, thank you. Sean, if you might, as we have our Transportation Committee, that's been up for about two years now, come up on two years. And we've discussed not only projects that we are currently doing, 126 and 118, that we've moved forward with, that have also been approved through HPP2, through the new scoring system, which I think is, which is a very positive thing for our county. The next thing to do is to see if CTV will actually fund them. So keep our fingers crossed on that one. But as we're going about doing that, we are committed to putting more plans in the pipeline so that when there's extra money, when money shows up, when the feds perhaps pass transportation bill that might have extra money sitting around, not that that happens very often, but it's wise to have things shelf-ready, ready to pull off, plans being done, all the preliminary stuff being done. So that being said, that was part of the stuff that we had been working on with the interconnector from the Spotsylvania Parkway connection. It has been said that, that somebody with your organization basically had said that we are moving resources from projects that are currently in the, in the works to move to this. And I just wanted to make sure that we're not doing that because it's imperative, from my perspective, that we get things accomplished and get things done. That's why we actually, I do think that we moved some out-year money down to 118 off of 126 to make sure that that will actually get completed so we don't have 10 projects sitting there half-funded, which is kind of pointless. So I just wanted to clear that up and make sure that, that we're proceeding in the right, right direction.
You're exactly right. And I think we've been kind of directed from our higher echelon that we need to have projects that are ready and fully funded. So I think you all are making the right stance to work for to try to fund the projects you've got that are our priorities. But also, you have to work on projects that you want to be ready for the next phase. So high-level planning things to have concepts and whatnot ready for the next phase when projects are completed, that where you're ready to step up, this is my next priority, is what you should be doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thanks, Sean.
Thanks.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is the Tri-County Soil and Water, no, excuse me, Gale Crooks, and Authorization of Funding for Two Child Protective Services Workers. Thank you.
Good evening. In front of you is a request for the Authorization of Funding for Two Child Protective Services Workers, to begin, hopefully effective August 25th of 2016 in the current year. We're requesting, these are two additional CPS investigative positions to address multiple year increases that have been experienced in both the volume of calls receiving on abuse and neglect cases, and an increase in the percentage of those calls that are considered R1, which is the highest level of response required for an abuse or neglect call. The cost of these positions within the current fiscal year would be approximately $27,000. And this monies would be covered through some additional state and federal funding that's being accessed, that was approved after the adoption of the FY16 budget this year. It is funding that will be continuing through FY17 budget, and will be available to help offset the cost of these positions in the next fiscal year, continuing. The current year, the cost would be approximately 20, I'm sorry, about $20,000. Again, that would be no additional local dollars. What it would be, would be a reduction of the, a smaller reduction in the use of fund balance than we would recognize in budgeting for these additional revenues that are being received in this current year. And next year, there would be a net local cost of approximately $88,000 to continue these positions through in ongoing years. And I'm happy to respond to any questions you all might have on these positions.
Any questions from the board? So, I'll ask a couple.
Sure.
Mr. Trampy? Okay, just a couple. So, just to look what we have, so how much increase are we seeing per worker? How much increase is the caseload? Is it a percent-wise? Is it?
Well, the average caseload we're experiencing right now, when we're fully staffed, is approximately 15 cases per worker, which exceeds the recommended ceiling of caseload by three, three cases. Now, that's if we're fully staffed. Unfortunately, due to staff attrition and some absences, due to extended staff vacancies, we have not been fully staffed in the position, in that area since May of 2015. We just hired, someone started today, this week, Monday. So, we have positions filled, but we also have somebody out on military leave. So we're trying to, the actual count per caseload right now would be in excess of 15, because we've had to distribute cases to other workers.
Per person?
Per person.
And so you're one person down currently?
We are one person absent, yes. If they were here, it'd be 15, so if you took those 15 and put them through the remaining five, they're probably more like 18 cases per worker right now.
So I guess one of the questions, we're hiring full-time government workers. Have you ever thought about contracting? Because is it cyclical, or does it always go up?
This has been going up, this is a multi-year increase we've been seeing. I don't know the average per year. Anna, do you have the?
No.
This is investigative work, it has to deal with, and you have to access state systems, which are highly restricted, and contractors not allowed to access those systems.
Any questions, comments?
Move to approve.
For a second? No? All right.
Motion passes 5-0 with Mr. Skinner and Mr. McGlaughlin, I have you as a no vote.
Can we recast the vote?
You're good to go.
All right, based on the system, we got a little glitch in the system here, so we'll do a roll call vote. And this is to authorize the advertisement of the positions, but not to hire until after the 17 budget's been approved.
Correct, and I will say, originally, we had asked the finance, when we put it forth of the Finance Committee, we had hoped for an earlier hire date. However, if it, the board is more comfortable with waiting for the budget to be approved, that was an alternate.
Let me make sure. My understanding then is the motion to authorize the advertisement of the positions, but not to hire until after the 17 budget's been approved. Okay, based on...
No, I'm there, I got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we gotta do a roll call vote, Gary. So, the motion was to approve. Okay. Mr. Skinner? Mr. Benton? Mr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Any chair votes aye?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is the Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation Annual Report.
Floor computer, please. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Kyle Haynes, the District Manager of Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation District. And this presentation is essentially a snapshot of the accomplishments within Spotsylvania County in fiscal year 2015. For those of you unfamiliar with the district, essentially, we serve Spotsylvania County, Stafford County, King George County, and the city of Fredericksburg. Organization's been around since the 40s, so we're over 70 years old, and have been serving Spotsylvania County ever since. So I think it's important to understand our mission and our vision as far as context. We essentially provide leadership, education, and technical programs to assist all resource users to conserve, sustain, and improve soil and water resources. And it is our vision to be recognized as the community leader in focusing action and establishing partnerships to achieve soil and water conservation. And this is a picture of our Board of Directors as of last year. We've had a number of individuals that have stepped down, and we have a committed bunch of new directors as well. So you can see a familiar face of Mr. Wayne Miller, and we have a new, highly dedicated Director, Ms. Jan Massey, who's here in attendance today. So we achieve our mission through implementing three main programs. Our agricultural program, where we implement the Virginia Agriculture BMP Cost Share Program, providing conservation plans and technical assistance to farmers, in addition to implementing finances and cost share. Our education program is a K through 12 youth, adult, full-spectrum services that we provide in schools and out of schools. And our newest and our expanding program for urban residential is ultimately a conservation practice where we can work with landowners to develop small-scale implementation of BMPs. And we're now implementing the Virginia Conservation Systems Program, where we can provide a cost-share program for individual residents, public, and private entities. So this is a synopsis of our accomplishments within Spotsylvania County as of last year. Within fiscal year 2015, the district allocated $292,000 for BMPs in Spotsylvania County alone. That $292,000 ultimately went towards livestock exclusion from waterways, cover crops, nutrient management, reforestation of crop, hay and pastureland, and woodland buffers. And if you, if you look at the amount of fence and associated practices installed for livestock exclusion, it's a very significant amount. More than five miles of fence was installed to exclude cattle and provide an alternate source of water, and essentially in a rotational grazing system, which is extremely beneficial for water quality improvements within the county. And in total, the practice has a pipeline, a well, a water trough, and a conservation plan with rotational grazing as a part of the management practice. For conservation crops, our BMP Cost Share Program ultimately implemented 1,629 acres of cover crops, which helps prevent the loss of nutrients by reducing erosion and preventing, or essentially enhancing soil health. Nutrient management is also a major component of the BMP practices within the county, and it minimizes the impact of nutrient runoff from providing an excess amount. So our cost-share programs incentivize over 3,457 acres of cost share for nutrient management. And we had two very unique applications, these ones a little rare, where a land practice is taken out of either crop, hay, or pastureland, and reconverted into a forest. And then we also established 25 acres of a woodland buffer to establish water quality enhancements on a conservation farm. And the first picture is essentially an example of a stream crossing and exclusion of livestock from the access of the waterway, and, and rock to prevent erosion as they cross the crossing. And the bottom picture is a water trough, which is an alternate source of water once you exclude them from the stream channels. The Clean Water Farm Award, we feel is so important, we acknowledged it twice. This year, there was not an applicant for, or there wasn't a candidate, we had two in Stafford County, but last year, we had Nelson Gentry, who was nominated for the Clean Water Farm Award. And just as a reminder, that he implemented conservation practices on over 220 acres, from the cover crops, nutrient management, and grass filter strips. Transitioning into education, we work with students in the schools and outside of the schools, and one of our major events throughout the year is supporting the Meaningful Days at Oakley Farm, where we reached over 1,200 4th grade students in two different events over three different days. And this is kind of an example of our watershed educational components. It's where we educate students on the full-spectrum source of pollution, ways in which individuals can change their impact on land use and waterways, and having them connect dots to kind of large-scale natural resource conservation topics. We support the Envirothon competition as well, it's a very significant competition that is hosted every year by Dominion. And Spotsylvania High has a high school team who participates, and we help facilitate, coach, and train the teams as well. And the teams ultimately compete in natural resource areas such as soils, forestry, aquatics, wildlife, and a special topic which changes every year. And last year, Spotsylvania County placed in third place, and this year, we are actually the host. So we have two competitions locally, one at Germana Community College in Spotsylvania County, and the other one at the UMW for the area regional competition at UMW in Stafford County. We sponsor a youth conservation camp. Every single year, we send two campers, two local campers, who are high school students that are seeking a natural resource experience. And they get sent to Virginia Tech and get to work with environmental professionals and faculty, and are exposed to the full spectrum of natural resource management. It's a very enjoyable and exciting time for them, and they usually come back, you know, with a life-changing experience. And I just want to kind of remind everybody that there are applications that are due this year, and we're essentially taking applications, and any Spotsylvania County high school student is eligible to apply. So if anyone is interested, the applications are due April 11th to Tri-County City. As far as our vision of being a leader in the community, establishing partnerships and coordination, we really look to seek out ways to cross county lines and discuss watershed and natural resource topics that affect all of us. And because we're a regional organization, we get that ability to think on a kind of broader scale. And last year, we supported a workshop essentially for locality staff and elected officials. And some of you, I think, were in attendance, and ultimately, the theme was working together to establish partnerships to sustain and improve our local soil and water resources through conservation. And these are the types of initiatives that we plan on doing annually to highlight some of the initiatives and the topics that affect us regionally. We also have a number of events and educational components throughout the year that help provide some of our funding. And we look to implement conservation practices as a result, that then goes towards funding our education programs. So we have an annual tree ceiling and rain barrel sale, and last year, we sold 800 bareroot tree ceilings and 10 rain barrels. Some of you may recognize the backside of Ray Sims carrying a rain barrel with two young kids. But ultimately, we have a location at the Spotsylvania County Farmers Market, the city of Fredericksburg Farmers Market, and then a location in Stafford and King George as well. And we're looking at doing that this year again, April 16th, as a fundraising event to get trees in the ground and promote the use of rain barrels. All right, so for urban residential, we historically have focused on agriculture specifically. And through the implementation of education programs, and now the ability to reach urban residential communities by providing conservation landscaping assistance and suggestions for BMPs, you know, local best management practices, we've been able to reach a number of individuals over the years. But now, we're able to implement the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program, which is a grant provided by DEQ over a two-year period, where all districts within the Chesapeake Bay watershed are able to participate. So these funds essentially allow a conservation cost-share program for urban residential landowners. And that includes private and public entities. So schools are eligible, counties are eligible, HOAs are eligible, and individual homeowners are eligible to provide an application to install stormwater best management practices such as petway stations, impervious surface removal, conservation landscaping, rain gardens, bio-retention, rainwater harvesting, et cetera. So this top picture is really an example of an urban stormwater problem, and this is in neighborhood, where you have extreme erosion, which causes a multitude of problems with sedimentation and nutrient loading, potential bacteria problems. And you can see there's no riparian tree buffer. And the bottom picture is a rain garden installation that shows the practicality of redirecting water into a depression with native landscaping. So this is kind of the types of retrofits that are now eligible for, really at this point, anybody that's interested. So it's a very exciting time to have a full spectrum of services from agriculture, education, to now an urban residential program that we can implement and provide actual funding. And so for anybody interested, or if you're looking at reviewing our full annual report, it's located at TCC SWCD, in addition to my email address and our location here in Spotsylvania County, right at Four Mile Fort. And at this point, I'd just really like to thank you all for your continued support. We really do enjoy serving the citizens of Spotsylvania County, in addition to the local government support as well. So at this point, I'd like to take any questions or comments?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Skinner?
Sir, we've had quite a few people come up here and talk about the biosolids that are put on it. What play, what role do you play in that? Because obviously, we have, what, three different levels classified as A, B, and C? And obviously, A is, seems to be the best, where it's... Can you enlighten us as far as what you guys play a role in that, or do you look into that?
For sure, yeah. The nutrient management planning components essentially allow for biosolids as an approved nutrient management aspect. The concerns ultimately are the long-term effects that it could potentially have on water sources. So we've actually been in contact with the Spotsylvania County staff, specifically Troy Tigner, about potentially developing a water quality monitoring system that would identify when the application of biosolids is being applied, and if there are any negative long-term aspects to water quality that could then be monitored on a regular basis. We don't take a political stance on it. We do follow DEQ's recommendations and EPA's recommendations as to the fact that it is a viable opportunity and viable option for farmers at a cheap cost, but we don't necessarily take a, take a stand on it. But we are willing to support and investigate any water quality concerns, and we also do implement a number of different water quality programs, which, if there were elevated levels of bacteria or pathogens that could directly be tied to biosolids, then the legitimacy of an issue could ultimately be taken to the, to the landowner and/or the entity that's applying it. So there are, there are ways in which to mitigate those problems. That'd be my summary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yes. You mentioned about the monitoring program. It's Tri-County Soil, Tri-County City Soil and Water Conservation District. That's really a mouthful.
It's a long one, yeah.
Are you guys willing to step up to the plate and conduct monitoring if that program does become available?
Absolutely, yeah. We are, we have an education coordinator who has a volunteer team at three different levels. We have over 30 people, volunteer support citizens, that are implementing a current program. We're also partnering with Friends of the Rappahannock on a number, another initiative. So we have the capability and the training and the know-how to implement a water quality monitoring program. monitoring program. It does ultimately just come down to the funding aspects. At this point, we seek independent grants from the Department of Environmental Quality to implement these programs. But to take it to a more consistent and a regular water quality monitoring program, we would just have to identify those resources in-house, and then the amount of cost and materials associated with it for lab analysis.
Yeah, I have several people in my district who are very active in the sludge, if you will, program. And the, it appears that the recommendation would be to only allow the spreading of Class A. Right now, it's Class B pretty much across the county, and these people feel very strongly that the Class B creates more of a potential hazard than the Class A, and would like to regulate the Class A only. But of course, due to the Dillon Law, we can't do anything unless they tell us what they can do, and, but we're working on that. I just wanted to make you aware of that if you hadn't been following it.
Yeah, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A quick one. How do you measure success? So you laid out what you've achieved over the year, but what does that mean? Did we reduce so many solids, or how do you measure success? Is there a metric that you're tracking?
For sure. Most of our metrics are handled by the Department of Conservation Recreation, where we get our funding from to implement the conservation practices. So there are a number of models that all of our BMP, our best management practices get implemented into, and then there's a number of different ways to display that data as far as the reduction of nutrients, the reductions of sediment, the reductions of a number of different pollutants that then affect what the TMDL for the state of Virginia is trying to achieve. So all of this funding and BMPs that get installed are working towards the success of the Virginia TMDL, so the Chesapeake Bay TMDL. But in addition, it also improves the local waterways. So if you have a direct correlation to a best management practices that's installed, the likelihood of bacteria and pollutants and sediment getting into a local tributary, which then ultimately into either the York River or the Rappahannock, is greatly reduced. And each one of those best management practices has a number associated to it. So we do quantify that, and we do report that. And we essentially have our agency that funds us provide those metrics. But that is available. If that was requested from the county, we could provide kind of a direct correlation to what you get out of a conservation practices and how that kind of fits into the big picture of our goals.
Do you think that would be good, just to have it sent out as informational purposes, just to send it to the board?
Absolutely, yeah. We can do that.
And then get posted too. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, looking at the hour and being aware of requests I had received to ensure that my budget presentation would occur after the 6:30 point on the agenda, I wondered if it might be acceptable to the board to skip ahead to reports from myself and the county attorney and the board and other matters, and on to closed session.
Do we have a closed session?
Chair?
Mr. Skinner?
We do have a closed session, but here's my point to this, is that it seems that when, on TV, when we go into closed session, very few people will come back onto the TV because they don't know how long about. I think this report is very important every, we have the school board sitting out there tonight and everything. What I would recommend that we do is go ahead and let Mr. Taylor start his budget report, please. I would say it comes at 6:15, then we go ahead to public comment, and then just continue, and then hold the closed session after everything is done, since we have school board here, and we have people on TV, and I think it's very important that the public don't miss any of his report whatsoever. That would be my motion to go ahead and continue on with that.
Okay, there is a closed session?
There is a closed session.
Okay. I mean, I think we just continue on. There's been, we don't think we need a motion because it's part of the plan.
No, exactly, thank you.
Okay.
No, that's very fine. Excellent. And Bonnie, if you'll slide about two inches to the right, I should be able to control this from here, and if I have problems, you'll save me, because that's what you do. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, let me pick up one item. Hey, you went with. I am very excited today to be presenting my first budget recommendation to the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors as your county administrator. It is, first of all, delightful in one specific particular, we are handing you today the thinnest and hopefully most user-friendly summary of a budget that Board of Supervisors has received here in decades. I want to assure the board and the entire audience that there will be a plethora of budget-related materials available via the internet. There will, there is an intermediate-sized summary that is available to you from staff. The executive summary, which is bound and distributed, it should be a good starting document. And in a departure from some tradition around here, I will not be reading my budget message that is at the front of the summary document. My desire is to take you through a high-level summary of my budget message and the budget summary, and to get us oriented to some major themes. The first being that we are all in this together, with just very few exceptions, the county staff are in fact also citizens and taxpayers of the county. And so at this point, I just want to say a brief word directly to the us-versus-them mindset that sometimes takes hold. We are very aware, as your staff, that we are dealing with the taxpayers' money because it's our money too. We pay the tax bills as residents of the county also. The first few slides contain information on the combined budget of our county for all funds, all sources. Most of the presentation will focus only on the general fund, but first, let's take a high-altitude look at the all funds summary. For FY '17, we're looking at a 4.4% overall increase in all funds. That includes nearly a 50% increase in schools' capital projects, a 3.9% increase in general government and utilities' capital projects together, a 2.7% increase in school operating and food service, and a 2.1% increase in the general fund budget. So broad summary of where our monies come from, and as you can see in the chart, much is from local taxes, 42%. The state provides 34%, and the rest of our revenues are relatively quite small. Where it all goes, and again, this is all funds, and some of these functions do overlap. Education here includes food service, because we wouldn't have one without the other. Interestingly, the 51% that is shown here for education and food service does not include public safety resources that are devoted to schools through school resource officers and DARE officers. It does not include the health and welfare services costs that are mandated by the school division through IEPs to meet special education needs. And education's not the only area where these functional areas overlap, far from it. We have a variety of internal support functions that work and spend resources to provide operability for the service functions that provide direct service to our citizens. A significant component of public works, for example, is to provide services that keep our buildings running, our environments healthy, and our facilities accessible to employees and customers alike, even in the worst weather. Our information services and finance functions that appear as administrative services in this chart provide computer, radio, and telephony services, budget and track, tracking of funding, provide analytics, and perform procurement services, all that support other areas of the organization. One of the things that I've been challenged, been challenging finance to work with me on is analytics that will show the allocation of support functions, the allocation of cost of support functions that are expended to support service providers. What portion or what is the cost of IT support that supports our public safety effort, for example? You'll see more, a couple of slides on those analytics here shortly. But first, to begin to focus in on our general fund component of our overall budget, and look at our general fund revenues. The big news is that we're, we are in a reassessment year, of course, as we all know, and our reassessment and new construction is showing about a 6.4% increase in values. That's, that's overall, it's a 7.5% increase on the residential side and 1.8% increase on the, on the commercial or non-residential side. That would take the equalized tax rate to 83 cents. There are some anecdotal indications, just a few that I've heard of extraordinary, apparently extraordinary changes in assessments. And I, so there may be some minor adjustment in our overall reassessment data. The deadline for administrative appeals of reassessment to the Commissioner of Revenue's office is Friday, this Friday, February 12th at 4:30 PM. And appeals may also be made to the Board of Equalization. So through the appeal process, there may be some minor adjustments, but essentially, the reassessment report, at least traditionally, the reassessment report that we're seeing at this point is a pretty solid estimate of where we're headed. We don't have NADA data yet for personal property. We're assuming a 9% decline in values, which would be consistent with the three-year average that we've been seeing recently for book values for vehicles. We do know absolutely that we are losing the SAFER grant revenue. The SAFER grants are expiring, and so we won't have, for FY '17, $545,000 in revenue that we've had for the last few years to fund nine firefighter medic positions. At the equalized rate, there will be $2.8 million in new real estate revenue, and that again is at the equalized rate. So this is looking at new revenue resulting from new construction. Sales tax is increasing by a bit less than 4%. Meals tax revenue is increasing by about 6%. There's a decrease of $3.2 million in the fund balance that stems from the removal of $2.5 million that supported a one-time increase in the transfer to capital projects in FY '16, and a removal of .7 million that supported a one-time, one-time operating expenditures in FY '16. So the total revenue adjustments from FY '16 is a positive $2 million. On the general fund expenditure side, the challenging aspect of FY '17 is that we are looking at serious commitments, expensive commitments, that are now, now on our plate. There is a significant increase atop of this list, the jail and juvenile detention contribution for Spotsylvania County is increasing by $920,000. This is a significant increase in our share of the cost of operating the regional jail. And it's a consequence of the discontinuance of the federal ICE inmates that used to be housed at the jail, and the discontinuance due to lack of funds of the jail's fund balance transfers to support operating costs. For several years now, the jail has been able to transfer some excess fund balance to contribute to operating costs, and that has buffered the localities from increased contributions to operate the jail. The problem is that the jail finances are now at a situation where the general fund is, no longer has an excess reserve, so they are in a healthy position but are not longer able to make significant contributions to operating funds out of general fund reserves. Contributions to other regional agencies are generally small items, but there are two standouts in the $191,000 mentioned here for contributions to other regional entities. First, our contribution to the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board is increasing by a bit over $44,000 this year. And secondly, I'm recommending an increase of $60,000 for the library system with a very specific target in mind for that money that I have discussed with the incoming director for the central library system. And that is, I'm asking the library to work with our schools to develop a plan to make school library resources available, staffing resources, or whatever may be needed, so that school library resources can be made available to the community during non-school hours on nights and weekends. The library has worked on cooperative concepts with other school divisions among our regional library partners, and they're familiar with the deployment of such services, and they're excited about the prospect of working on a plan in Spotsylvania County. The schools are seeing, and we're seeing at the Cable Commission, a lot of demand for, a lot of pressure to meet educational mandates. New educational mandates require increased use of online resources to complete schoolwork. And web access in our rural areas is a huge issue, so making our libraries, our school libraries accessible to particularly our student population nights and weekends would be a huge benefit, and that is the targeted intent of additional money for the library system in FY '17 in a modest amount. We also are looking at full-year funding for the 15 new positions that are at Fire Station 11. Remember, we're opening Company 11 this spring, and so we'll only be funding those positions for part of the year. FY '17 will have to fund for the full year, and that full-year funding will cost us an additional $553,000. We're also at the final year of the five-year VRS transition, that is, comes at a cost to us of $66,000. And retiree health insurance, our cost for retiree health insurance is going up by $158,000 in FY '17, and that's due to additional participants, additional retirees enrolling in the system. Finally, also listed here is a compensation adjustment at a cost of $1.1 million, it's a 2% compensation adjustment for general county employees. I wish that could be greater, but that is the best I can see of potential for us, given the other constraints in the proposed budget. I'm recommending that this increase be merit-based, and I've been working with human resources, they've been working very hard on an update and simplification to our standard performance measurement instrument. And please do look, there will be significant, as I mentioned, supplemental materials that will be distributed to you and available online. And among those is a table that finance has prepared that gives a history of compensation adjustments to county staff over the past several years. Looking further at the recommended budget, there are a number of initiatives for public CPS workers, and this ties back to Ms. Crook's item that she's, where she sought funding for a portion of the year if we can get these positions started. CPS workers are, in my mind, public safety resources. In fact, they're very high-value public safety resources to the extent that they provide hours or incidents of protection for some very vulnerable young citizens of our county, and they do it at a very efficient cost. There's also a recommendation of two additional DARE officers. DARE officers are a strategic choice. We're recommending upon consultation with the sheriff. Also is the addition of half-year funding for two additional patrol officers in the sheriff's office, and three additional firefighter medics for Company 11. This will fill out the staffing complement at Company 11 so that they will have enough staff resource to cover leave and holiday time without having to pay overtime, so it's actually more economically efficient and reduces overtime cost to go ahead and add these three positions so that we have a true full complement at Company 11. Also is, is a portion of an FTE, a portion of a full-time equivalent recommended as a fire inspector. Recall in the fall that Louis Watts was before you recommending, and the board approved additional inspection resources for the building department due to the uptick in commercial and multifamily residential building in the county. Those structures by their nature and under the code also require fire inspection, and we need these additional fire inspector services and capacity in order to meet that same need. These public safety initiatives altogether amount to 9.7 additional full-time positions for public safety. Also recommended for public safety, the sheriff has been working for a while on a, what he calls a career ladder concept. This is a retention tool that provides opportunities for advancement within law enforcement in the sheriff's office. Retaining employees, retaining deputies is critically important to us because the cost of training and fielding new deputies is very expensive. The training takes a year to complete at a cost of about $100,000. So retaining our deputies is simply smart business. The career ladder program is a small investment for hopefully a big return in terms of retention. Similarly, a strategic investment for fire, for firefighters and FREM is to invest $26,000 in converting 10 positions from firefighters to firefighter medics so that we have better-trained people deployed to provide greater service in the field. Next are initiatives pertaining to supporting functions in our local government. Yep, the applications development manager, these are, these are positions in information services and in finance that are recommended in order to meet needs of the organization. The application development manager is a position that's been unfunded since 2010, and the position's needed to support customer demand for, within the organization, for new applications for multiple county functions and public safety in particular. The network database administrator is needed to address integrity and security issues throughout our systems and to enhance the longevity of existing applications while maintaining our system performance. Our database is growing at an increasingly rapid rate, both with the increase in service staff providing more service to customers and with changes in accounting and reporting standards that necessitate the creation of more different data records. The two positions in IS, I believe, are at critical points of need in our organization, and they're particularly acute needs while we are concurrently implementing various upgrades, including a major upgrade to our HR and finance system and completing our new radio system, and while we continue to respond to expanding customer demands for service within our organization. In finance, two senior accountant positions are recommended to be added to create additional capacity that is needed in finance to meet critical needs that have gone unmet in recent years. The workload in finance has left finance short of capacity, really in all divisions of their department. Changes in both accounting standards and reporting requirements have imposed, that would have been imposed on us in recent years, have made the work of finance increasingly complex and demanding, and result in the need for these positions. Looking at the workload and the history of operation in finance, it's clear that, that we're getting a sustained and significantly increased level of performance in terms of numbers of hours worked out of our staff that is, continues now unabated, that there are not valleys in the year that once were, but the staff is, is pushed pretty much throughout the year. The upgrades in the new financial computer system will position us to implement internal auditing under our new controller, and, and the second of these new positions will empower us to begin moving forward with that function as we have the new system implemented. There are also two money-neutral shifts in positions that are recommended, two administrative assistants from capital projects, one going to information services and one to utilities. I'm gonna look and provide a little bit better detail on the history that compares the service functions and support functions in our organization. 2009 was the last budget year before we began cutting positions or holding positions vacant or unfunded in response to the economic downturn. And as we've striven to maintain or even improve services delivered to the community, greater focus has been on increasing staffing in direct service functions. So, since 2009, as this graph shows, 78 positions have been added to, 78 service positions have been added, firefighters, medics, deputies, providers of direct services to the community, while only two support positions have been added to the organization. Staffing for ancillary support, those who support the frontline service personnel, has fallen behind. There's not an algorithm, there's not a standard or a benchmark that I have been able to find, and I'm not meaning to suggest that there should be a ratio between the number of backhouse support personnel that we have and the number of fielded direct service workers that we have. But I do believe that if we look at the trend since 2009 and, and see the, the, the growing gap between those who provide service in the field and those who provide support that enables that service, can see that the divergence is legitimately a source of strain for the organization. And there are clear indications of legitimate needs that I see for beefing up our support staff. There are increased technology demands and increased complexity of the technology that we field. There are new and more complex accounting standards and the demand for increased accountability, both within the organization, accountability, accountability to our community, and accountability through our mandatory reports. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, I'd asked the staff to look at the allocation of support costs through various functions in the organization. As noted at the bottom of this slide, we've done this by applying the most recent cost allocation report to the FY17 budget, and finance believes that these are reliable estimates of support costs, but at this point, they are just estimates. You can see most executive services, that's the small category all the way on the left at the bottom, most executive services that are, and those are comprised of administration and legal, and most administrative services, which are finance, information services, human resources, the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer, and a significant portion of public works are all allocated out in service to, provided to other functions in our government. Significant internal service consumers in the organization include judicial services. They consume $1.5 million mainly in public works maintenance and energy costs, and public safety consumes $6.3 million in internal services, including considerable information services, finance, HR, and Treasurer's Office support. One, and that, that is a point in my mind worth highlighting because it is part of the explanation of the link, part of the clarification of the link between the support needed in technology and finance to enable service in public safety. There are also allocations that go in and out of the Department of Social Services. DSS provides, DSS provides $3.9 million in service to our schools, services that are mandated in public education mandated through IEPs. There's also $1.2 million in allocation, and that are coming from other county service departments to DSS, from finance, from HR, from information services, and so the net is a $2.6 million reduction in social services. Now, the, the school division relationship to support services in the general government doesn't fit on the same graph. The, the scale here is four and two-thirds times the scale on the previous slide, and we're looking here at the difference between $275 million and $279 million. The $4 million difference represents the cost of support services that are provided to schools. About $100,000 in support cost depicted here is finance costs related, associated with the performance of the audit, and the treasurer's costs that are attributable to the schools. The greater portion of this cost, the 3.9 million, that is the cost of health and welfare services that are mandated through IEPs in the school division for special education. And this is, again, just a portion of the special education that's provided, this portion is provided outside of the school division. I understand there are other costs of special education that are internal to schools. I don't mean to represent this at all, at all, as the cost of special education. This is simply the portion of the special education cost that is provided by DSS. Another significant portion of our budget for FY17 involves capital projects and debt service. And these are projects that are in the program and that we are anticipating borrowing, when I say in the program, they've been adopted as part of the CIP, the county projects here have, and are anticipated to be funded through borrowing this summer. Now, not included on this summary slide is about $425,000 in new debt service for transportation projects that we are proposing to absorb and pay out of the general fund in FY17. This new debt service is $1.3 million for eight county general government projects. These are all public safety-related, the completion of our new radio system, modifications, and this is the 3.5 million, correct, Bonnie? The, the 3.5 million dollar improvement plan to the animal shelter, digital tone paging system, CAD system improvements, the 911 system upgrades and equipment, fire training center improvements, and replacement of fire and EMS apparatus. Those together will create a new debt service cost of $1.3 million. School projects impacting debt service are technology replacement and upgrades, bus replacements, and capital maintenance, and they carry a price tag of $2.7 million of new debt service. Now, as far as the general fund goes, we have absorbed, we've absorbed $2.4 million in new debt service in the general fund since 2011, and we've absorbed another $2 million for transportation projects since 2011. So, what we've already absorbed, what we've absorbed is nearly the equivalent of two pennies on the real estate tax, that we've shifted from other priorities in order to cover that debt service out of the general fund. This new debt service is one of the challenges to be faced in FY17 if we are to perform the plan as approved in the CIP and complete these projects. I'm gonna flashback briefly to the November 2014 referendum, because I think it's important as a community, as we face the capital costs and the new debt service costs altogether, that we look back at, at a very important piece of how we got here, is the, in 2014, the voters of our community were asked to express their opinion on referendum questions that were broken down into categories for transportation, public safety, and schools. And the detailed information that was provided to the community by the Board of Supervisors in connection with the referendum questions clearly spelled out, it was, is the answer to question number seven in the materials that were provided by the county to the community in connection with the referendum, detailed the number of pennies on the real estate tax rate necessary to fund the various elements of the capital projects for the various functions identified in the referendum questions. As a community, I believe we need to see and to recall that we considered these questions of whether to authorize the issuance of debt to provide financing for this variety of capital projects, and, and the prospective costs of the associated debt service were clearly spelled out in terms of pennies on a real estate rate. And the county clearly explained upfront, when asking the voters to authorize the bond financing of the capital debt, was explained upfront that the additional debt service could well translate into pennies on the real estate rate. The authorization granted by our voters was not insubstantial. It was a very, very significant thing that they did. I don't regard it as a promise they gave, but neither do I regard it or want to suggest that it was a entitlement that they declared. It was clearly before them that the capital projects authorized and the borrowing authorized would come very clearly at a cost, and those were costs that they approved. Again, the, the questions from 2014 were for transportation projects with a potential impact of five cents on the real estate rate, public safety initiatives of three cents on the real estate rate, and schools initiatives at up to 11 cents on the real estate rate. Currently, the new capital debt service before us in the FY17 budget amounts to two cents for schools. two cents for schools and one penny for public safety projects. This slide begins to bring together proposed revenue changes from FY sixteen for the FY seventeen budget. And with it, as mentioned, the projected equalized rate is eighty-three cents, equalized rate for the real estate tax is eighty-three cents. And even at eighty-three cents, we yield an increase of two point eight million dollars in revenue. There are additional meal, sales and meals tax revenues to be recognized, um, personal property tax due to additional vehicles, um, even with the depreciation that we anticipate, and other small matters of additional revenue. Further down, the, the, the big piece of the recommended FY seventeen budget is keeping the real estate tax rate at eighty-six cents, which is an increase over the equalized rate of eighty-three cents. It is solely and expressly in my mind for the purpose of funding the new capital debt service necessary to complete the projects that are approved in our CIP and approved in the schools' capital plan and that were authorized by the voters in the 2014 referendum. These would represent use of one of the three pennies approved by the voters for public safety and two of the eleven pennies approved by the voters for schools. Note also, right below, uh, the, the second line from the bottom, is proposed a reduction in the personal property tax rate from six dollars and seventy-three cents to six dollars and fifty-nine cents. Mr. Ross, we tried very hard. I know you had mentioned particularly the desire, and I know it's been on the hearts and minds of, of, I think, all of the board, and many of us on the staff have been very desirous of finding a way to reduce personal property tax rate further, um, for this recommendation for the FY seventeen budget. These fourteen cents are the, are the best that we can do. And it will, those fourteen, that fourteen cent reduction will reduce our projected revenue by eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. It will have, um, good effect on bringing our, our personal property tax late, rate in line, and I will show you that. First, let's look, though, at where in the continuum of our neighbors a real estate rate at eighty-six cents, um, would hold us, and that would be between Henrico County and Caroline Counties. And you can see here a sample of just comparative localities. On the personal property side, and at, at first glance, the three dollars and thirty cents might seem foreign, but remember that in person, in comparing personal property tax rates, we have to factor in each locality's assessment ratio as well. So even if the tax rate itself is the same, the effective rate of a locality that assesses, some assess based on fifty percent of the property value, others assess based on one hundred percent of the personal property value. So what this graphic does is normalize the assumed basis and adjust so that we're comparing apples to apples. And on this comparison, again, the, the personal property reduction of fourteen cents, while not as much as we hope to accomplish, does put us in a pleasant location in comparison Want to highlight some expenditure changes, some expenditure reductions on this summary The base budget adjustments, one point two million is the aggregate of several smaller adjustments that are described in detail on page fifteen and sixteen of the summary document, um, that is distributed. Those are, those are multiple small adjustments. Also here is noted a, an eight hundred thousand dollar, um, adjustment due, due to revised practice on funding vehicles. Though we've customarily defined capital projects as those that cost fifty thousand dollars or more and have a life expectancy of five years or more and are non-recurring in nature, we nonetheless transitioned several years ago to replacing our computers and servers out of capital projects funds rather than from the general fund. Block purchases of broadly used organizational tools like computers that are five to seven year property under the IRS schedules, um, and that need to be replaced regularly makes good business sense. Replacing our fleet vehicles on the same type of schedule and calendar makes good custodial sense. Um, our fleet vehicles typically remain in service significantly longer than five years, and our fleet vehicle purchases, other than those that are purchased for social services, social services vehicles need to be purchased differently because we continue to get partial reimbursement from the state on those vehicles, but treating our vehicle fleet otherwise the way we treat other durable property, um, and buying it through capital projects funds, um, is a strategy to give us a cost-effective way to catch up a bit on our fleet, uh, replacement. In summary, changes in our general fund come down to about this. Revenue, including the three percent, uh, increase that's reflected in keeping the real estate tax at eighty-six cents and the decrease in personal property, um, would bring us to a five point one million dollar increase in revenue for FY seventeen. Expenditures, including the base budget and new adjustments, would be four point one million dollars in expense, and the difference of a million dollars goes to meet, uh, fund balance requirements consistent to implement policies adopted by the board last summer. The fiscal stabilization reserve and the budget stabilization reserve. What did we leave out? I think, in, in facing the, the challenge of what to do with the necessity of funding the jail and other mandates or commitments that we've already made, and facing the challenges of looking at the new capital debt service for both general government, I should say, public safety and schools' projects, and what to do with that, um, it would be a disservice to the work of many, for me not to mention that left out of this proposal entirely are four point two million dollars in other, uh, I think, valid and useful recommendations or requests, uh, from county departments, and also ten million dollars in additional requests made by the schools. I have, um, felt compelled, given the, the status of the school capital projects as already approved and programmed and needful, uh, these are, again, the schools' capital projects involve bus replacement, technology replacement, maintenance of school capital assets, um, and those, the, the new capital debt service for those alone represents two cents on our real estate tax rate. Next steps. This is a, uh, introduction back to the calendar, and notice inside the front cover of the summary document is a reminder of the budget calendar. Next week, the school division will present their budget to the board. Here is also scheduled a presentation from the citizens' budget review committee. On the twenty-third of February, we'll have a budget work session, and at that point, that early, because this is a reassessment year, we are looking for your decision on February twenty-third for what tax rate to advertise. Other things to look forward to. There will be, um, supplemental communications, and Bonnie can detail here in a moment, the, the voluminous materials that are ready to be and will be posted on the county website and otherwise made available to you in connection with the budget. But following them soon will be a board communication focusing on changes in special service district, um, tax rates, and they will also be discussed as part of the budget. In March, we'll have a review of staff recommendations for changes in utilities rates and fees, correct, Ed? And also in March, um, review of staff recommendations for changes in community development fees. And that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is, concludes my high-altitude scan of the FY seventeen budget. I commend to you the summary. While I think all of the materials, it'll be presented online and otherwise available, are very informative. Staff have worked very hard to put together a short, um, executive summary document to be most informative on the budget, and Bonnie, could you please summarize the other materials that are available?
The materials, the other materials that will be available very close to the end of this presentation will be the presentation that's just been given to you, frequent, uh, ten frequently asked questions that occur as part of normal budget processes. The full version of the budget document will be available online. This greatly reduced number of page document will be given to you very shortly and will be available online, um, and I believe that's it.
So, based on that, do we have any questions from the board? Mr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Miss? Excuse me. Six-thirty.
Thank you very much. Start with my general confusion. Slide twenty-two says excluded from the budget, the schools' request beyond added debt service of ten million. But back on slide three, under school operating, the difference between 2016 adopted and 2017 recommended and under school operating is seven point one million.
That's correct, because the schools are receiving additional state and federal revenue, which is not part of our general fund transfer, and slide twenty-two is reflective only of the amount of the schools' request for the local transfer that exceeded the two point seven million dollars that is being recommended.
So our recommended increase to the schools is two point seven million?
For debt service from the general fund.
Quite a bit more. You mentioned the expectation or estimate that native values would decrease by nine percent, but we're showing at a six point seven three personal property tax rate an increase of eight hundred thousand dollars. How does that reconcile?
The increase is due to anticipation of new and newer vehicles coming into the county replacing, replacing older ones that will be leaving.
The debt ratio to value projected in 2016 to be under two percent, where does that
In 2017, even with the new, um, projected debt to be outstanding, it would still remain under two percent. And in the summary document that you just received, that is shown on page eighty-seven.
And the debt service to expenditures ratio was expected to be under ten percent in 2016. Where does this, where does that go in 2017?
In 2017, with the new schools' transportation and public safety debt, it will be at, estimated at ten point four two percent.
How much, uh, if you have this at hand, was transferred from the general fund to
Nine point seven million dollars in 2016, and it's projected at eight point four million dollars in 2017.
How does that work accounting-wise? If we borrow for capital projects, does that wash through the general fund first, and that's part of the transfer, or is that ongoing revenues?
That's ongoing general fund revenues from property taxes and license and fees that gets transferred over. That transfer of cash reduces the amount that we have to borrow
Right.
...for the capital projects.
Mr. Taylor, you mentioned Fire Station Eleven still being scheduled to come online in spring. Do we have a more exact estimate of when that's gonna happen?
Ed? That's, that's due to come online, uh, in May.
I just wanted to comment on the discussion on the tax rate increase to fund debt service. You weren't in this position at that time when we were going through this, but those projections that you, you talked about of the cents on the tax rate were very controversial. And I, and I think some of my colleagues tried to calm the voters and say, we still have to approve this. This spending doesn't automatically happen just because it gets approved by the voters. This is an approval of borrowing authority. And I'm only one vote, but I made a promise that I would not, it was my intention that this borrowing authority replace the two thousand and five referendum which was about to expire, which has now expired. So it was not my intention that we run up debt and add to the tax rate to pay for it, and I have to keep my promise. I cannot vote for a budget which raises taxes to pay for debt service, but I'm only one vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Ross?
So I'll start with slide nineteen. And I just have to ask, and, and I, and I see this, the three dollars and thirty cents when we do the effective personal property tax rate, but I get emails and calls from my constituents all the time about our, our personal property tax rate being higher than anybody else in the state of Virginia. Why do we assess at a fifty percent rate and not have something? Because it seems confusing to me. This probably took a lot of work. This probably took a lot of work for somebody to do slide 19, to figure out how the different counties assess values and what that rate is. Is there, and I know maybe this is a Deborah Williams question. And I'm not sure if she's here tonight, the Commissioner of Revenue.
I believe it is a question for her, as it's her responsibility to determine the assessment ratio.
And may I interject? The chairman had asked earlier today, actually, there was a recent dialogue, but not so recent as earlier today, requesting Ms. Williams to be present perhaps next week at your board meeting or at a meeting later in February to address the reassessment issues and the use of comps and the valuation of assessments. I would be happy to add this question, Mr. Ross, to her list of matters to address when she is before the board here soon.
That'd be great. I think it's confusing when you look at it. And if indeed our rate really is effective at $3.30 or whatever it is, you know, I think that's the reduced rate there. I mean, I'd just like to know why we do the 50% of assessed value and not just fully and cut the rate in half of what it is. Trying to find out why. Going to slide 17 then, and I just want to reinforce what's already been said. So what Dr. Trampi said is we are going to get, and at the top, we have a personal property taxes, 673. It's our current rate, bringing in $800,000 more than we did this year. And that's because of new cars. Basically, I know last year, we brought in $500,000 more than our forecast on personal property, and that I was told was because of new cars. So what we're giving back to the people this year is only what additionally we're bringing in. So to me, I see the, you know, I appreciate the 14 cents off the personal property tax rate. And it's definitely, you know, I'm glad, is that $60,000? I always thought it was $64,000.
$60,000.
$60,000 per penny. So I applaud it, but really, in essence, we are just giving back the additional income from new car purchases in the county. So I don't see it as enough. And then I'm going to chime in with what Dr. Trampi said. If you're moving on to slide 16. And I know that there were two districts, I believe it's Livingston and Berkeley, where none of the bond referendums passed. And I was surprised to know that even in Cortland, the school bond referendum did not pass. I was just trying to look it up on State Board of Elections. And I remember at the time the 2014 bond referendum came through as well, that it was like, these are not tax increases. This is worst case of what could happen if everything was approved by the board to spend. So somehow, if, I'll go back in time. What the citizens were informed is that's the worst case. They were by no means, in my opinion, saying, we approve a tax increase of this amount. And so I too cannot support the 86 cent real estate tax rate above, which is above the equalized rate. And again, I'm just one vote, but now you have two that are saying that openly. I did have a question about the application development manager on slide 10. Jane is here. Did you say that that position had been vacant for 20 years? Is that what I heard?
Since fiscal year 10.
Since fiscal year 10. So for seven years. And do we have any application developers now in the county that are working and developing code? Jane's coming up. This is $120,000, which by the way, is two cents off the personal property tax rate.
Since 2002, Mr. Ross, we have actually, our strategic plan has led us into COTS applications, which is computer off the shelf. This position will actually manage what will become program managers that lead these capital improvement projects and fiscal year projects, both for public safety and non-public safety applications.
So it's not a?
It's a currently named position, the applications development manager.
Who is it? It's not a guy that's going to develop? Because I thought I heard Mr. Taylor said that this would be, there's a need for programs to be developed inside the county, customized to our needs.
There is a need for our applications to be implemented within the county.
Those are COTS applications?
Yes, sir.
Not things we're developing on our own?
Any customized interfaces that we do now, we do through our vendors. So all of that is now outsourced where it's necessary.
Okay. So do we have any developers that are actually developing code and implementing it in the county right now?
We have two developers, a full-time and a part-time, to support our legacy real estate and personal property and financial systems that's required to support our critical financial applications.
But they're just making changes to those specific applications? They're not writing, they're not developing new stuff?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I also had a question about the senior accountant internal audit function on slide 10. What is that for? Because I know in years past, we've talked about having an independent internal auditor, full-time staff. Is that what this is?
No, sorry, it is not the exact same thing. It is a position that will help us begin to develop a program for internal audit. But it is not, per se, an internal auditor.
And why would you want this instead of, say, an internal auditor?
We feel like this process is more in line with what we need to do here in the county, develop and review the internal controls and to develop a plan to review all of the county processes. We have thought about this long and hard. We've looked at different options. This, we have a new financial system that we are implementing. And we believe that this position would begin to help us develop the processes necessary so that we could actually develop an internal audit vision in the county. We see this position long-term, looking at all of the county processes, reviewing all of the many questions that you all have had over the years and that citizens have had.
Are you up for negotiating or talking about, just giving the pros and cons of having hired an independent auditor, but that still would be a county employee?
Yes, we absolutely, we can provide you more details about the plan that we've looked into. And that is certainly something that we plan to do over the next few months as we work to finalize this budget. And absolutely, we're willing to talk to you about the different pros and cons.
Okay. Thank you. The last question I have is on the school operating budget, going from 258 million to 265.1. I'm just wondering, I mean, I tend to think of gas prices being the biggest part of an operating budget or a big chunk, and they've come down. Can somebody from the schools be willing to explain that increase for the operating budget? Is that later?
The schools will be with us next week.
Okay. All right.
Tuesday will be, they'll be one week from today, and they will incorporate that.
That's something I'd definitely like to understand better. That's all I have.
I'm going to open up public comment right now. Yeah. So why don't we take a break from the budget? I think it's 6:30 at this time. Close enough? Yeah. So it's 6:30. If anybody sign up for public comment?
No, sir.
Is anybody would like to speak that has not signed up? Seeing none, let's go back to the budget. Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. And thank you for catching that 6:30. First of all, Bonnie, when you look at the, on slide number six, you said that there's a 1.8% commercial increase. Do we take in consideration that we lost to Best Buy or Staples and stuff of that nature in these things? Because that definitely was income coming to us, and now we don't have that. So these stores that are shutting down, how do we use them compared to what our new commercial is?
I think that's a question more for the assessment office than for budget. And so I can take note of it, and maybe Debbie can talk to you about that when she's here.
Okay. And I think that I'll probably have another question. The next question I have, and it's probably for her too. We noticed that for every penny, we got $60,000 of the personal property tax, correct?
Right.
All right. Now, when we take one penny from the residential, we get 1.2 million dollars.
1.3.
1.3 now. Okay, thank you.
Yes, 1.3.
1.3, good. And at one time, we knew that that cost the citizen 17.17 dollars and 50 cents. Has that changed to what that penny caught? And again, it's the average.
The penny, there's two different ways to look at this. One is all residential properties, which includes raw land. And that's $19.36 per penny.
$19 and what?
36 cents for the average residential property.
And that's raw land?
Including raw land.
Including raw land?
Yes, so that's all residential properties.
Okay.
Then there's a second way to look at it that is only the residential properties on which a home is cited.
Okay.
That average equates to an annual bill of $24.45 per penny.
Per penny, okay. And do we have that same type of figure for the personal property tax? What does that cost the citizen? Because what I've seen and what I've got called on is when we raised the personal property tax, it increased some people's bills to 200, and over $200 a year. And again, may I ask, this 24.45 for, in the 1930, that is per year, correct?
Correct. That's per year.
Per year.
For the annual bill, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Per penny.
And then what are we going to, and so what does that one penny actually cost the citizen for on the personal property tax?
I've taken a note of that, but I'd like to ask you. I think the data would be more valuable if we ran it after we run the native values, which will be towards the end of this month.
Okay.
Does that suffice?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, my point is, I think what we want to do is, we don't want anybody to pay anymore. And so what I'm saying is, when you look, and that's going to be very important, because what, the penny for residential is bringing us 1.3 million dollars. The penny on the personal property tax is bringing us $60,000. So just, you know, common sense is, we're getting more for our penny on the residential side of this. And even more, I think it's costing the resident here in Spotsylvania probably less money, based on what people told me their personal property tax went up when we raised it as high as that. So maybe there's a solution here where we can work and keep what citizens are paying out the same, but actually getting more for a buck. You know, more bang for our buck. So that's why I'm asking that. I mean, last year, we talked about that. And we said that, you know, really, if at 25, even 19 or 24, that's a little over $20 a month for a 12-month period. Okay? I'm sorry, that's over, that's $2 a month. When we go to the, just the residential for a penny, you said 24.45. So it's just two, you know what I'm saying? It's $2 a month to get us 1.3 million dollars. Yet if you take a look and divide what some people's personal property was, I had one person say his personal property went up to $260. Okay, and divide that by 12, that's like 10 folds. That's over $20 per month for our personal property. So there's some way that we should be able to work a formula out that would allow us to raise one tax and still not charge the citizen more than we're working this year.
Okay.
Okay? And that's why I just need to know, need to know the figures on that, on that and everything. And the only other thing I would say is, when we base performance, our raises on performance, I think there's got to be a metric that says, if you do this, this, and this. Because too many times, I've seen personal opinion, okay? Or somebody doesn't like somebody in their department, and they're not going to get a raise. That doesn't mean they're not doing the job. So along with that personal performance, I would like to see, or performance-based raise, what is your metric? What are the department metrics decide who gets to pay and who doesn't get it? And I would hope that there's no really personal opinion. We've seen it in the military many times on our fitness reports. If somebody don't like you, you end up at the bottom of the list. And that's not good for you. So I'd like to see something like that happen. I think that's, right now, will do. I will say that I think IEPs in the schools are very expensive. And we always have to take that in considerations. And not only that, but sometimes these IEPs for people, not only to have a special teacher, but also to have a person that understands the language that they're speaking in, an interpreter. So those are things that we've got to be very cautious of and very apprised of. Okay? So thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Any other comments? Mr. Jakubowski?
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Taylor, and finance staff also. This is a lot of work, but I do appreciate the Cliff Notes that you gave us. They will be very helpful. My stack of budget books was outgrowing its spot in the closet, so. I had just had a couple of questions. So pennies, 1.3 million on the tax rate, correct? Are we still removing dollars from the transportation fund and putting it in the general fund? Or have we paid that back?
In 2011, I believe it was, we stopped the transfer from the general fund to the transportation fund of the decal money. And that cessation is continuing in fiscal year 17. The financial forecast projects that we will need to start that back up again in fiscal year 18 in order to balance the transportation fund.
And the total cost of that is?
The total cost of the decal revenue and also the set-aside revenue is about $3.4 million.
And in 18, when that comes due, we're looking at 3.?
We're looking at a $3.4 million hole in the general fund.
Okay, so we're kicking the can down the road, but we're still spending the money out of, yes?
Yes, and based on, based on the forecast. Now, the forecast takes into account the transportation projects that are in the CIP, the existing transportation debt, plus the projects that are in the CIP. So if those projects are altered moving forward, that, of course, changes the debt service, which then changes that transportation fund forecast.
Okay.
So all these pieces fit together.
And the ones that are currently in the CIP are mainly 126 and 118? Stuff that?
Correct.
That we've already agreed that we're moving forward with?
Yes, it is primarily those projects.
Okay. And just as a side note, the three that passed, actually, I think all bond referendums passed my district, but the three that passed passed overwhelmingly, excuse me, in my district also. Another question I had was, oh, I'm sorry, it's more of a statement. I went through my questions. All those were already answered, too. CBRC doesn't have a report for us yet, do they? Even though we asked them in October to take a look at the budget. From what I hear, they have yet to do it. So I'm not sure if we're going to be getting any help from them. Have they turned in a report to us yet?
No, sir.
Okay. That's kind of the whole point to them, is to help us at this point to point out the excesses that might be out there that are needed to be cut back. Just like make a little statement, the, when we look at budgets every year, we tend to focus on the tax rate. And back in the 2000s, when the tax rate, and I had argued against raising it every single year, and that was from the position that revenues coming in were being generated at 5%, 6%, 8%, even 10%, I think, one year. And in my opinion, you don't need to raise taxes for more revenue when you have that much money coming in. That's more than enough to do the things that we need to do. With a equalized tax rate of 83 cents, and I'm sure you don't have this offhand, but can we get the number of, the percentage of taxpayers that will be paying more taxes? Because I know when we equalized the tax rate two years ago, we had 54% that were. Because I know when we equalized the tax rate two years ago, we had 54% that were.
We do actually have this information as part of one of the frequently asked questions. It's number nine that was handed out to you, and I realize you haven't had a chance to look at that. So the percentage of residential properties, and again, that's all residential properties, at 83 cents, seeing no change or a decrease would be about 50, excuse me, 47%. Those seeing an increase would be 53%.
So even at the equalized rate?
Correct, even at the equalized rate.
So even at the equalized rate, we have 53% of our citizens paying more taxes?
Yes.
Okay. What?
That, yes, that's residential, yes.
I know that's a question I asked, so that's why it was on there. How about this one? This is a new one. What tax rate would be necessary for nobody to pay an increase in taxes?
I don't have that answer. I will, I will check into that.
Stump the finance department.
It's like Jeopardy.
I had to do it. You came up with that. I had no idea you had that on here, so. But no, that, my point being is that I'm not focused on the, the equalized tax rate as, as the, the be-all, end-all of what we do. When revenues to our schools and we're giving out a little bit more to public safety, though we did open Station 11, we did build the station. And so obviously, it comes with a cost to man the station. So there's a cost associated with that. Then there's also obviously other costs that are associated with what we do that are mandated, that we just have no control over. I personally would like to see that, because for me, my two top priorities are public safety and public education. And when you continually short-change them, your community does suffer. And the problem that you see is that it doesn't happen overnight. It's not a year-to-year metric that you can look at and say, see, that, that extra money would have helped here. It's a cumulative effect, and it does add up. And then part of that, too, and, and my focus will be, as I do go through this even, even more, is finding ways to bring in more revenue to our county. The numbers that were shown here of real estate tax of 2.8 million in new dollars, and you can see a little less, a little less than half, probably 40%, was sales and meals tax. So what I'm going to be focused on is trying to raise that portion of it. And we do that through our economic development programs. We do that through our EDA. We do that through our tourism program, which I'd like to remind the board, we advertise for tourism at roughly about, less than $100,000 a year. I think it's about $94,000 that we spend on tourism. So if we can up those numbers, we up the revenue side, but we don't up the expenditure side. And I think it's important for us to realize that this tight budget that we're looking at right now, our growth rate in the county is less than 2%. When everything that's in the pipeline, even if it's a 20-year process, comes online, what are you going to do with a budget when you have a 4% growth rate or a 5% growth rate? You want to talk about tight budgets, those will be incredibly hard to deal with. So I think that what we need to do is take a look at, at what is going on, how we can fund the priorities. And like I said, the priority for me is public safety and education. I know that the school board has worked long and hard on their budget and still come up with a $10 million gap. So I'm looking forward to seeing them next week, as we see them here tonight, too, and working with them next week and throughout this process to see what we can do to close that. Thank you.
Mr. Benton?
Yes, first question, how do we rank as far as our growth region, in the region? Does anybody know?
I'm not sure the answer to that, but I can check into it.
There was a recent report out. We can have detail brought forward, but I think over the last five years, we're looking at roughly 1% per year.
I was just wondering how we compare it to the other counties and areas in our region? Also, I guess, Dr. Trampy had asked a question about the schools. I can't remember which it was, but there was a mention of 7.1 million as far as money from the state that.
Well, that's, I believe it was referenced to, was it slide three? It's all funds. It's slide three, looking at all funds revenue. And that, that's, that is an increase that is gathering in other sources of funds, not us.
That's going to be other sources of funds plus us.
Right, it's going to be a combination.
So the 7.1 of that, 2.7 is the increase in the local transfer. So then 4.4 million is the increase to the schools from other sources, like state and federal government.
I will mention on the, the paper performance, I'm not a big advocate of that. I know there's, both ways it goes as far as pros and cons. We've been talking about paper performance ever since I started getting paid with the county back in, I think, '94 is when they first came out, the evaluation, somewhere in that range. I know I was under TC Wadi, and they, for the longest time, they weren't even used. And it got to the point where all you gotta do is make a, let's just say, a 3-0 as far as when you do your evaluations. And as long as you make that 3-0 level, you get your pay regardless. Getting that, I guess, is, can be very hard to evaluate on all these different departments where you get a true quality of work rating, quantitative, and measure of what, what we're doing as employees, not have opinions in it firsthand. As a line person and as somebody as a supervisor, you're using opinions. For the life of me, I can't think of how we're gonna word it and arrange it, be evaluated where you're not putting in opinions and have that chance of people being underevaluated or overevaluated, friendships and everything like that. It's a real, only other thing than, well, there's two things I have. You know, as, as a board, we've approved a whole lot of building, particularly subdivisions, townhomes particularly, where we're bringing in more and more people. And that's gonna, you know, our staff is asking for more staff. When, yeah, and what we've approved and what's coming into this county is putting more and more on our county employees. I can only tell you firsthand, as far as like the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department, more people, you're running more and more calls. And that's why we're having to build these fire stations. And what's approved is approved, but we're doing it to ourselves. We're already in a hole, as far as I'm concerned, as far as our infrastructure, schools, roads, which we talk about every single time we meet. And it's only going to get worse if we don't do something. It'll reach us probably for the entire four years. Lastly, I'd appreciate, I just want to say thank you for your work, Mr. Taylor. Your work, Bonnie. Everybody's work, as far as the staff, is what you've done. Appreciate it. I know y'all have put in many, many hard, long hours. And I know from the comments today, not only for myself, but others, that have our work, a lot of work to do. And I'm hoping we can come cooperatively together and have a successful budget that will hopefully everybody can stomach. Thank you again for all your hard work. I can't thank you enough.
Mrs. Sebula?
I guess I'm last.
Next to last.
Except, except for the chair, excuse me. Anyway, Mr. Taylor, I would like to thank you for an excellent stand-up presentation. This is the way I like to be presented with a budget, with a summary, and we can look into the details later. You've covered the high points, I appreciate that. I want to thank staff for all the work that they put together to put together this draft budget. One of the things that concerns me about what we've heard tonight is the equalized rate. This, this kind of bothers me, especially when 53% of our residents here are going to be paying more. I don't believe that, that this is the way we need to go. I have received several complaints from the people in my district that they live in a small house, been living there for years, and all of a sudden, their assessment's gone up as much as 20, and I think one was even 22%. This is, this is really kind of out of whack. I don't know what we can do to correct that. I know one of the things that I will do to correct it on my own situation is to fill out a form, turn it into the Assessment Office, and request a review. And this is what I've instructed my constituents to do. I was reminded today and asked to make the announcement, which you've already made, but I want to say it again, that the deadline, folks, is Friday. You need to turn in this form by Friday. The deadline was extended for two days as a result of the snow. But you need to fill that out and turn that in Friday, and you will receive the full cooperation of the Assessment Office. Postmark will work, that's correct, thank you. So I, I urge you to do this. It just doesn't seem right that properties that have been around for a long time with no improvements are all of a sudden going out of sight. And, and this is the complaint that, that I've been getting, and, and I sympathize because I'm in the same boat. So enough, enough said on that. Need to read through all of the information we've got. I don't have questions. I'll have questions later. This is what the summary does for us. I look forward to working with the schools on, on their budget and their compromise next week. And I think we'll go far to resolving the budget as best we can. Thank you.
Mr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of our expenses this year is due to the expiration of our SAFER grant. And I do recall that we had an application that they were deciding on last September. I assume we didn't get it, because I never heard, heard that we did. But my question is, do we have any current applications outstanding for a SAFER grant?
Annette is shaking her head no.
And my only other comment, my recollection from the Freelance Star article about growth in the area was that we're at, at about 1%, which I guess is higher than our neighbors, but doesn't seem all that much. But most of it, from what I recall, is from births outnumbering deaths, and a smaller part from those moving in outnumbering those moving out. And those who are moving in, they pay taxes, too. So I just wanted to put that in. Thank you.
So I've got a couple of questions. And one, I know the CBRC was brought up, and, you know, what, partly what I envisioned the CBRC, when the budget does come out, now it's an opportunity to go line by line through the budget and compare what was requested by what's funded, and why, why are there increases in given areas? And just, I mean, I pulled up page 68, the Judicial Admin, and the way I read it, they requested 2.051 million, and you recommended 2.15 million, $100,000 more than they requested. So I mean, those are good questions. So why are you recommending more than the departments are asking for? So to me, that's what the CBRC should be looking at, line by line, and find out what's the discrepancy and why, maybe it makes sense, maybe it doesn't, maybe it's an error. Those are the kind of details that I'd like to see the CBRC come back with a report that would help us make decisions whether or not, maybe it is just an error in the budget, and maybe we can clear up some of the issues. The one thing on the Commission on the Revenue, I did ask a question similar to Mr. Sebula. Some constituents called back questioning their assessments. And they thought they were too generous, that they don't believe that their house appreciated as much as the new assessment did. And I, I think it's based on comps in the area, was the initial response I got back, is that, you know, if a new high-priced subdivision went up near your house, did that drive up your assessment? And I think, I asked the gentleman, would he like to appeal it? And I, his, his comment back to me, he thought it was very challenging, a lot of paperwork, and it was not easy to challenge your assessment. I don't know that for a fact, but that's something I'd like to potentially have the Commissioner, next meeting, come back and talk to us about, exactly how are the comps compared? I mean, that's really what the question was. How is, or how are existing homes compared, and how do they use comps? And the process, I think, would be helpful. And, and again, she'd sent an email, and one is, it's really just residential we're asking about, not necessarily commercial. Did you have a question?
No, I just, I wanted to highlight, because the, the, I am, I am frustrated for the sake of your constituents, sir, that your, that the, the process dictates that administrative appeals, which are the simplest and easiest and friendliest form of review, administrative appeals must be addressed to the Commissioner of Revenue by this Friday, the 12th.
Right.
She will not be here until next Tuesday at the earliest to explain the use of comps in the process, but.
But with that, is there any way to extend that? I mean, does it, is there an impact to waiting another week or waiting two more weeks? That's something, if you could ask, that question, just so she could come back and potentially give people an opportunity after her, her presentation, whether or not they would like to make an attempt. Just to add a couple of questions in, what was our adopted FY15 budget? Just for, and I'm just going, because we had a, it looks like an increase from 16 to 17 of 20 million. I'm just kind of curious, are we seeing a, a trend year after year?
Are you referring to the all budgeted funds? Are you referring to the General Fund?
I think I'm looking at, according to slide three, that's all, I believe. Yeah, so are we seeing, I mean, like I said, we're, we're seeing less than a 2% growth. Are we growing our budget faster than we're growing our county?
15 adopted, okay, no, it's 16. This is 15. Fiscal year 15 adopted budget for all funds. I'm going to give you the breakdown that's similar to the breakdown on slide three.
Well, just the bottom, the total budget, bottom, the total, the bottom line FY15 adopted budget.
Bottom line is 450 million, 450.9 million dollars.
So we went up, looks like 17 million to 16, and then we're going up 20 million to 17. So we're seeing about a 5% growth, something like that? I don't know what, what the number works out to be.
Something like that.
Okay.
I think it's also a little misleading to compare bottom line budgets that have capital in it, in them, where the capital changes every single year. You could have one exceptionally large project, and that.
And it changes, and it's requirement-based. So I mean, I'm just kind of looking at our, it's, but it's continuing to go up year after year. So it's not like we're not spending money, it's just where it's being spent is the question. So one of the things keeps coming up about equalized rate. But if I understand right from the formula, even, an equalized rate is a tax increase of 1%.
Correct. The equalized rate is calculated at 101% of the prior year's levy.
Right, so, I mean.
So if you took out the 1% and kept it at 100%, you could no longer call it the equalized rate, because it wouldn't be the state-mandated equalized rate. But the rate would be 82 cents.
So that was the thing. So even at equalized rate, it's still a 1% increase. And that potentially could be one of the issues, why even at the equalized rate, there's 50% of the people have a tax increase.
Correct.
Right? And I'll have more questions later, I'm just going through the notes. And, you know, some of the things that I'd like to see, and maybe this is a CBRC questions, but why did it, you know, the jails, I know you briefly explained a $920,000 increase this year. What was it, what percent increase is that from the previous year? Was it a 25% increase? I mean, what was our previous jail or juvenile detention? I mean, and is everybody seeing a similar type increase?
Well, in the case of the jail, as Mr. Taylor pointed out, it is, it is something that we, we talked about a couple of years ago. They began to use their fund balance, because they had a large fund balance, to cover the cost of their debt service, an ongoing cost. They have used that for several years now to reduce the locality shares. It was intentional. And now they have used all of their excess fund balance. And so while it is an increase, and we will get you the exact percentage, it is simply tied to the, it is less about their expenditures increasing and more about the fact that they no longer have fund balance available to pay for their, for debt service. And they're having to come back to the localities now to get that paid for.
And the formula for that funding is driven by our share of the jail population. And the formula for that funding is driven by our share of the jail population.
Absolutely.
So, it's not people population, it's?
Jail population.
Jail population. But again, if you, yeah. So, if you, all right, just, so, down below that, the compensation adjustment, so 2% pay raise for the county employees, and the 1.1, what is a 1%? So, is the 1.1, does that equal 1%?
1.1 equals the 2%.
So, it's really a 4% increase to county employees, is that what you're doing?
No.
It's a 2% increase that, at a cost of 1.1 million.
Oh, okay. See, I'm looking, the way you've got it written here, it's 2% plus 1.1 million.
Sorry.
The 2% equals the 1.1.
Okay, so, it's just a 2% increase, which you're going to apply all towards performance-based increase. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I, I did have a note to address that point, and I'm happy to do that now or in a moment.
Let me go through mine, then.
Absolutely.
One of the que, and, again, I, I've always been supportive of public safety and all that. Can we, and this really goes to the Fire Chief, can we train all the firefighters we need in this budget? Can we put it, you know, fire, training, it's going to be 14 for 11, plus chancer, how many other firefighters are we going to be hiring in FY17? And can you put them through the academy?
We already have the 15 people for Fire Station 11 hired. They will begin employment on February the 29th. They will go through a reduced Fire Academy that will have them ready to go in June. We use a, most fire departments use a 1.3 matrix for posi, for people to cover one position. We only use a 1.2 in Spotsylvania, which reduces the number of employees but increases the number of overtime, a little bit Mr. Taylor mentioned a while ago. At 15 positions, five people per shift, three on an engine company, and two on an ambulance, it requires five people every day, times three shifts is 15 people. I can't run that station with those 15 people and maintain staffing every day because of turnover, because of vacation, because of sick, because of whatever.
But you can do it. You can, you can train them.
Yes, sir. And that would leave the three people proposed, and we are set to do another academy beginning in July, because we already have additional new, additional vacancies already since we've hired the last group, and we would run another academy in July.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
So, on slide 21, just wrote, is BS, what is BSR again?
BSR, that's the Budget Stabilization Reserve. That was one of the revised policies that was put in place over the summer.
I was thinking that might have been. So, on this one, and this is going to lead to a little bit, so, we're going to increase our fund reserve by a million dollars to meet the 11%. So, that's based on the revenues we put aside last year, where we just increased that from 10% to 11%.
Correct.
Okay. So, we had, if I remember right, about an 11 billion, $11 million carryover in FY15.
Correct. Not carryover, $11 million in available fund balance at the end of the year.
Yeah, so surplus carryover, right, yeah. Fund balance. So, we put 4 million towards the reserve, right, in the fund stabilization reserve. Of the $10 million, I thought we put 4 million towards the reserve, 4 million in the special reserve, which I'm assuming is this BSR, right?
Correct.
And then 2 million into EDA. Is that correct? How we allocated the 10 million?
I believe it was.
So, we, we put 10 million away, basically.
Correct.
And that was FY15. So, my question, you know, and this will, FY16, I would anticipate seeing something similar to that. You know, by the time, July 30th, well, at the end of first quarter, we should start seeing the results of the FY16 budget. And we have seen, you know, surpluses or fund balances year after year. So, the question is, should we see something similar to that? Because we didn't do a lot of changes between 15 and 16. So, I would assume we'd see something like that. So, again, did we account for that money in the FY17 budget? So, potential, I know you run a conservative budget, and that's good, but did we see, are we, do we anticipate seeing a 10 million, 8 to 10 million dollar surplus on the FY17 budget? And I know it's a...
Yeah. At this point, I wouldn't anticipate seeing that. We are in the process, actually, coming up very soon, going to be working on the mid-year report. In advance of doing this budget, I did look at the mid-year revenue numbers, and while they were up to a certain degree, and I don't recall offhand exactly by how much, we factored those increases into the fiscal year 17 projections on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, until we really start looking at that mid-year report, it's hard to say what savings we'll have. I understand your point.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, the, the money's sitting out there, and it's accumulating. The 10 million is sitting in the, the fund balance, and I, I don't agree with all of how we allocated, but now we're asking for another million dollars, which is essentially a one cent tax increase on the, the, you know, the public to put into a fund balance that we don't necessarily need.
And, and by default, because these reserves are percentage-based, each time your revenues go up, those reserves are going to have to go up.
Right.
Until we get to, you know, some level that I don't know what, I don't know what the magic level is, but until we get to some level, we're, we're going to need to keep putting those reserves away.
So, the other, and the last question I'll just bring up here is that, we talked about publishing SSD rates or...
Yes.
So, in both of the re-zonings, Alexander's Crossing and Jackson Village, the, both of those developers agreed for a SSD to be applied in lieu of proffers. Is, are we going to, but we haven't initiated that yet, and I think it's probably, probably a good opportunity to initiate those, because those properties have been rezoned, now's the time to take their commercial properties, we should apply that SSD to those now, as they agreed to in their, as part of their proffer.
Okay, the service districts and the special taxes would be in place to repay debt service within that district. So, we wouldn't have a special rate until we have the debt that needs to be paid off. I don't know what the improvements are that are to be paid for by those service districts. So, it seems like we may need to have more conversation about that.
Well, I think, you know, it's probably a good opportunity is, because now, they did propose bridges and roads, and I, I understand that, you know, if I understood right, we were going to borrow the money upfront to build a lot of that, and they would start, they would pay it back through the service districts as part of that in the proffers, correct? Or...
I have to say, I'm not, I'm not really sure.
We need to discuss, yeah. So, I think before, before it falls off the plate, we need to discuss those service districts as long as you're taking it up.
Okay.
Service districts that we're referring to are those that are already in place?
They're in place, correct. I'm just bringing it up because you have it here, I just want to make sure that these don't fall off the plate, because the developer volunteered them as part of his proffer package, and I, there's an opportunity to take advantage of them. All right, any other questions? Mr. Sebula?
Yes, I'd kind of like to make a couple of comments here. Back in 99, I worked on the Comprehensive Plan, and I can remember that we established a 2% ceiling on growth, and I believe we've pretty much stuck to that ceiling over the years. And it, it bothers me that people think that we're growing out of sight here. We have had development, we're planning for future growth, but as far as our growth rate, we've maintained under 2%. The second, second thing, the 3% of people over 50%, or, or I guess I should just say, the 53% of the people who are going to be paying more taxes, their average tax increase is supposedly $6, but that doesn't take into account those people that, that were, that their taxes, I mean, that their assessment went up 15, 17, 20%. So, this is a, this is something that, that still concerns me. And lastly, I, I may be mistaken, but I certainly recall last fall that we addressed the Citizens' Budget Review Committee to look at the FY16 budget line by line, and, and come up with a report on what their recommendations were to reduce budget areas, or make recommendations to reduce budget areas. For them to look at the FY17 budget is a little after the fact, because we're going to act upon these things before they're going to have time to review and make a report. So, if they had done their job back in the fall and made their report, we would have that information before us and, and could have moved forward. So, that, that disturbs me a little bit. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Taylor, I think, appreciate the time and effort, and let's move on.
If I may, I'd like to just correct one of the answers that I gave previously. Mr. Trampy and also Mr. Ross, you asked me about the personal property rate and, or the personal property revenue, and why that was increasing at the current tax rate by 800,000. And it is about 400,000 of that is increasing based on newer, newer cars coming in. The other 400,000 is because we realized that for the past three years, our revenue projections have been about $400,000 low, and so we added 400,000
Got you.
To try to address that.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I just have a, I wanted to just point out to the public that the Citizens' Budget Review Committee is composed of volunteers. They don't get paid, and, you know, we have a, a bunch of committees that are like that, and I want to thank you for your service. I don't know if this board gave clear direction or not, and, but I've heard you kind of chastise tonight, I know several members are in the audience, and I just want to thank you for the volunteer efforts that you've done, and for looking at, at the budgets in the past, and I hope the present and future. So, thank you.
Mr. Skinner.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. One last thing I'd like the County Administrator to look at, and that is, you know, for many, many years, I know on the school board I was on, so I would say the last 12 years, the people in the Planning Commission have, have, have worked at the same rate for the last 12 years. And, and I'm looking at, at the value they are to us. They certainly go out and they meet with the developer, they sit down with them an awful lot, so if you would, please, just, just as an, an action item, would you please tell me if you brought them up? I think right now they're getting paid $700 a month, I believe. If you could check what that would cost me for, for $1,000 a month there, to raise them. I know they do an awful lot of work. Okay, well, you can tell us who's winning the primary, that'd be fine. I'd like to know myself, Paul, thanks. But yes, please, if you would just do that, throw that in the budget and see what that would do, because these, these people have been on this, and, and I know they do all of them. All of them do a lot of hard work out there, meeting prior to giving us the recommendations with the people and with planning and stuff of that nature. Please, how, how would that impact, please? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mark, I appreciate it, and the staff, I think, appreciate all the effort you did. I'm sure there'll be a whole lot more questions coming up here shortly, so...
Could I take just a moment to address two, maybe three points?
Just a moment.
Just a mo, I will, I will be as quick as possible. This is a very compressed... Put me on for three minutes, Jim, just hit start. I just wanted to ask, on the paper for performance issue, it, again, as I mentioned, we've been working with HR to re-architecture the, the performance instrument, and also been working with lead staff through the 360 review process that we've gone through with the department directors, to look at delegating managerial leadership down further in the organization, break up some of the groups of, you know, operational groups within departments. And one of the objects with this tool is to give greater authority at lower levels of management where there is more immediate contact and involvement with employees. It's challenging to me, there are basically three types of compensation increments to consider: cost of living adjustments, some sort of merit payer pay for performance, and things that we don't even have in the general government, but the school division calls them steps. Oh, we used to have them in the general government. I think some of you that have federal roots or associations may be familiar with steps, and they're basically longevity increments with satisfactory performance over time that are programmed, and, and hence call, hence the name steps. 20 years ago, when I was in Spotsylvania County in a different role, we had steps, and then steps were very, rather quickly done away with because they were expensive, and they were programmed, and we, we were challenged in the budget, the board was challenged in the budget, to find the money to fund steps. I am challenged by the concept of calling a 1, 2, or some years even a 3% pay increase a cost of living adjustment, because I'm aware that through some measures, not which are necessarily embraced by the federal government, but by other sources, the actual cost of living in our communities increases by far more than 1 or 2% in a year. And I think it, in a way, is, risks really hurting employee morale by offering a, a small increment in the name of cost of living increase, when in fact, by many measures, that incre, that increment is not actually addressing the cost of living delta at all. So, at one level, I think, to be frank, that merit-based increments may be the best that we can do if we challenge our organization to manage effectively. I certainly share the concern of several of you, that they can be processes that are polluted by personality, by favoritism or bias, but we're committed to working hard as a leadership team to avoid that, and at the end of the day, if the board's preference is to provide a compensation increment by a cost of living adjustment, or any other tag that the board pleases to put on it, I do want to just voice support and, and strong desire to find some way to increase compensation to our employees. And then finally, in closing, it still says three minutes on the clock here. I don't want to say that it is, it was a sobering and difficult thing for me to bring forward in this year, my first of all years, a recommendation for a real estate tax increase. Very sobering, very challenging, and it, we struggled with how it might be avoided in the recommendation. I think it's very important, though, that we look responsibly at the cost of the increased services that the, the citizens of our county continue to demand, and the complexity of the work that we do. And I was quite daunted by the challenge of the incremental implementation of Company 11, and the additional cost of funding that for the full year, and the very large cost increment associated with the jail. Look forward to working with you through this process, and look forward to working through the choices and finding the board's pleasure. Thank you.
Couple of housekeeping things before you go, and then I'll leave you alone. The documents are up on the website now, so that's good to go. And then also, because this is a very long process, and you're going to see these faces from now through April. You are familiar with Mary and with me, and you'll see us here at the table throughout this process, but we do have a couple of new budget team members that I want to introduce to you. On the second seat behind Mr. Cole, Holly Dove, she's been a budget staff member for many, many years, so you recognize her, I'm sure. To Holly's right, to your left, Richard Zinke is our senior finance, senior financial analyst, and to his right, Barbara Verhollen is our budget analyst. So, you're going to see information from them and see them at the meetings, so I thought I'd introduce them to you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sebula.
Yes, I, I want to take exception to a remark made. As a past member of the Citizens' Budget Review Committee and chairman for approximately eight years, I in no way want the current members of the committee to take offense at my comments. I certainly appreciate the hard work and volunteerism that goes into being, serving on any committee, but once you accept an appointment to a committee, you are obligated to, to go with the direction given to that committee in any way, matter, shape, or form. My comment was simply made to address the fact that we had asked for information, it was not received as yet. Coming later on is a little bit too late, and I conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yakubowski. Thank you very much. Two things real quick. One, can we talk about the calendar, because it is on the back of the presentation? I have heard a lot from folks that have said that the March 31st public hearing that we do over at Cortland on the budget, giving people a chance to come in and voice their concerns, falls in the middle of spring break, and I know that was brought up before. And I had talked to Mr. Taylor earlier today to see what could, if anything, be done, because I think that we need to give people every opportunity possible to come opportunity possible to come and speak. So is there any change that could be brought about?
The challenge, and Bonnie and I got to talk about this briefly this afternoon, there is considerable constraint to the calendar due to this being a reassessment year. And I think the bottom line, correct me if I'm wrong, Bonnie, of our discussion is that to move the public hearing earlier, we would need a decision on the tax rates to advertise next week. Now, those are advertising only, and as is very familiar, the advertised rate represents the ceiling of what could be adopted, but any rate lower than the advertised rate is fair game. If the board can see the way clearer to make a decision on what rates to advertise next week following the joint meeting with the school board on Tuesday, and we could advertise and proceed to public hearing the week before the scheduled spring break, is that right, Bonnie?
Correct, that would, yes, the week before.
And understand, you're only gaining a week that way. If we stick with the current calendar, the decision on the advertised tax rate is due week after next.
I would personally like to see it moved. I mean, I think the positions on the tax rate have already kind of been staked out by a few members on the board. So I'm not sure what one week would actually gather or gain us. So having the public hearing, not the week of Easter break, I think would be something I would like to do. And I'm not trying to cut off any discussion, but if a motion is necessary to do that, I'd be more than happy to provide one.
A second option, if I may, and I'm sorry, Mark, we didn't talk about this. If we shift the public hearing out, instead of moving it forward, if we shift it out to the week beyond spring break, you could still have your tax rate advertisement decision made on February 23rd. But what would happen is the public hearing would be April 5th, which currently is scheduled as a budget work session. So you would lose one budget work session, and that would mean that you would have the public hearing one week. The next week, you would have one budget work session, and the week after that, you would be expected to adopt the budget and the tax rate.
I would, if Mr. Yakubowski, I'd prefer to take it back rather than go forward with it. There's a lot of questions that have been asked, and I would like to see the information given to us first. All right. And I would not be prepared. I mean, if we're not losing anything, the one extra work session, I don't think is going to hurt us, rather than not knowing what we have next Tuesday in front of us. We need to get these questions that we asked tonight in front of us publicly, I believe. So my motion would be to move it back a week, not forward a week, but back to, you said, April the 5th?
April 5th.
Yes.
Second?
Fine with me. April. Well, it's currently a budget work session on April 7th. That's what we're talking about.
April 5th.
April 5th.
April 5th.
April 5th, okay.
So, well.
Right. Well, it's currently a budget work session, is what I'm saying. We would just turn it into a public hearing at Cortland on the 5th, yes. Okay. 5th of April.
That begins at 7:00 P.M.
The, which is that?
Public hearing?
The public hearing, 6:30.
6:30.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Spula.
Yes, it, I would see no reason why we couldn't reverse the two dates, the public hearing on the 5th and a budget work session on the 31st. We lose nothing that way and get everything done.
There's a motion, and there's a second.
So the motion is to move it back to the April 5th and reverse it like Mr. Spula said.
Public hearing.
Yes, sir. The public hearing back to April 5th. Make the other, the public hearing date now work session for us.
All right.
The only caveat to that is, is Cortland available?
Yeah.
I wish we had somebody to ask.
Holly's already checked, yes.
It is?
Is Bill.
All right.
Very nice. Thank you.
So call a question.
Thank you.
Motion passed 7-0.
All right. Mr. Taylor, I think the next thing is closed session. But before we do that, why don't we have a board comments, and then we'll... Mr. Skinner. Benton. Mr. Trampi.
Just one quick thing. If I could ask staff to send me a current list of county staff positions which are funded but currently open. Go ahead.
Mr. Ross?
I had one thing, and I had sent out an email to all board members. I'm not sure if you had a chance to review it, and it was about supervisors' travel. Currently, our GSA rate is like 300% or three, or travel, I think it's per diem, is 300% of the GSA rate. And additionally, I had proposed in there that our travel would all be approved by the chair, and the chairs would be by the vice chair, which would fall more in line with the county's employees' travel. If, is there any dissension in approving what was in the highlighted email? It was actually penned and inked in there to bring our GSA rate in line with, or travel rate in line with what the county employees are at? If there is, we could just bring it back to the next meeting.
Mr. Ross, I would like to say one thing. The only concern I have, and that is, I did a trip out to Denver for VRE last summer, and I found out, actually, being able to stay at the hotel at the higher price, saved us money because I didn't need a car. I didn't need a $25 parking at night at the place in Denver and wherever we go. So, you know, the thing I'm looking at is that where do we really save the money? I mean, it's going to be up to us, and if I had to go out again, I'd do the same thing.
Sure. In that case, that makes sense. But I guess what I'm really looking for is I think we should be held to the same level of expectation as the county employees and not have something that's more without. In that case, I would think that, Mark, and I don't know if you know the county's travel, that would seem to make sense because overall it saves money. And maybe there's exceptions that the county employees would have where they can do the same if they no longer have the parking fees and whatnot. Is that currently the case?
Yes, there are exceptions for the county employees that are approvable by me, and I think one of the root issues here is to which there are treatments of two different classes of persons under the policy. All elected officials, the constitutional officers and the Board of Supervisors are, under the current policy, you approve your own travel because you are an elected official. The change is to authorize or to require approval of board member travel by the chair, or approval of the chair's travel by the vice chair. And the, there is a process change. The limit, I think there are certain circumstances, limited circumstances, and it's on demonstrated value, where I can approve up to 300% if I have it, and therefore the type of situation exactly as Mr. Skinner describes.
I'll tell you what. What I propose is to put this on our agenda in two weeks. We can have out the whole document redlined of what the changes would be, so everybody could get a good chance to review it.
David, sir, one last thing I'd like to comment on. I really, you know, if you want to move it to 150 on GSA, I really don't have any problem with that. What I do have is, is that as an elected official, you know, to go to VACO and stuff of that nature, to be honest with you, on the eight years I've been on the board, I've gone on no trips whatsoever.
I haven't either.
And so, so my point is...
Well, one trip to New York that we would...
Yeah, well, that's true, too. But that's because we know that the chair and the vice chair are going to go up, represent us up there. That's true. I did go on that one. But, you know, as far as what I think is important to my constituents and what they refer to me, you know, I think as an elected official, I have the right to make that decision whether I travel on that trip or not. And I just, you know, once again, if the chair should override that, well, you know, the chair may not be the constituent. So I'm happy to go along with your GSA rates. I really don't have any problem with the exceptions if we can prove that we can save the county money. And other than that, I prefer, I would like to have that ability to choose whether I go on a trip or not. And most of the time, even if we go to VACO, we usually have our own representatives that have been selected from the sport to do that. So that's where I feel on that, those changes, sir.
Well, I, yeah, I'd just like to add it to the agenda in two weeks. That way, everybody, it could be on the agenda. Everybody can see it. The public can see it. We can talk about it in two weeks.
Good. A quick comment to that, to add something in addition to that, because I agree with Mr. Skinner, that we're all elected officials, all on the same level. And what I would like is that we're held accountable to our voters. And so what I would prefer to see is any reimbursements, trips, whatever, that are associated with what we do, up on our website, because I know there is a section that deals with each of us individually, which I would like to take a retake on the picture, please. But, or just Photoshop, whoever's good at that. But I would like that up there, because I think that, as I've been talking about recently, the more transparent we are, the more open we are, the better, then citizens can come and be as informed as possible, and not have to, as was done several years ago, somebody had told me they tried to get the information of supervisor, not me, who was traveling, and it was for a request. And so the cost to the citizen, just to see how his own representative is spending money, you had to pay for that, which I find ridiculous. So I think that whatever we spend, I've, I don't travel anywhere, but if we were to, it should be up there, and all of our citizens should see it. They should then be able to click on it, make it as user-friendly as possible. So if we can add that to sort of open up the process, that'd be great. Thanks.
So we'll put that on the agenda for the discussion next meeting.
Comment.
You're coming. Mr. Ross, you done?
I am done.
All right, Mrs. Spula.
Yes, I find it kind of ludicrous to have one public official approving another public official, especially when both are in the same public status as elected officials, for the board chairman to be approving the vice chairman, and the vice chairman to be approving the board chairman. This smacks of being kind of ludicrous, because pat one back and pat the other back and move on forward. I have no problem with the public record of travel being posted, but as far as an elected official approving another elected official, I object to that. And secondarily, I worked for over a year on the travel policy, and it was very specifically noted that all elected officials were included in that chart as approving their own, approving their own travel. And that's the way it has been ever since the Board of Supervisors has been in operation. So I think that consideration needs to be made when we go forward to the next meeting.
Mr. Yakubowski, any further comments? All right, and the chair. Mr. Benton.
Sorry to take up the time, but we do have to be held accountable for everything and be held accountable, just like our, the workers, the staff with the county. We can't do one way for ourselves and a different way for somebody else. You can see it in the Senate and Congress today. You know, there's all kinds of transgressions there. They don't have to do the health care. They get paid for life. I mean, next thing we know, we can approve that for ourselves. We got to be held to the same standards, and I'm all for it.
Okay. And the chair has no... Will read us into closed session?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I thought you meant comments on that. I have a board report still.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Well, that was...
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Spula. All right. Mr. Yakubowski.
All right, just real quick. And if staff can bring this back for, I would like to, I hope it's not too late at that time. There are bills that are going through the Senate and the House. The House passed it overwhelmingly, though I'd like to commend those who voted against it, Mr. O'Rourke and Mr. Cole and Mr. Howell, among others. But they were in the small minority. Basically, what it does is it guts the proffer system. And it's the House bill, I'm sorry, the Senate bill is SB 549, which, God bless you, which is unfortunately being patroned by one of our representatives. And it also is kind of frustrating that this was not brought up beforehand whatsoever. It kind of appeared in the House. It showed up. Delegate, dude never even brought up that he, as a delegate, never saw it until he showed up for the first day. You know, just because some localities are abusing the proffer ability that they have doesn't mean that you universally then revoke that ability. As we're a Dillon Rule state, we can't do anything without the state's approval. One of the things that, and I would like to highlight this, in the description on Richmond Sunlight that gives the description of the bill, it states that in any action which a locality has denied a rezoning or an amendment to an existing proffer, and the aggrieved applicant proves by preponderance of the evidence that it refused or failed to submit or remain subjective to unreasonable proffer that was proven, suggested, requested, blah, blah, blah. By the locality, the court shall presume, absent clear and convincing evidence to the contrary, that such refusal or failure was the controlling bias for the denial. So then you will have the court forcing the localities to approve rezonings. It opens up a really bad can of worms. There's other localities that I know they're opposed to it in my discussions with them, and I would ask that staff bring back a resolution to oppose this. Hopefully, it's not too late by that time. But I do know that we have a meeting on Tuesday, so I would like to see if we could bring that back. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what is the crossover date? Have we crossed over already? Okay, so it's really not too late if we... Yes.
Mr. Benton, call him.
Yes, sir. It's be your resolution to adjourn in the closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in the closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to probable litigation, or such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically legal issues related to Route 3 widening contract. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23711a7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Call a question.
Motion passes 7-0.
Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting were heard discussed or considered in a closed meeting.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Benton.
Aye.
Mr. Trampi.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Spula.
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
And the chair votes, aye.
And, Mr. Chairman, I believe as a result of the closed meeting, I just, I will pose a motion for your consideration. That would be to authorize the county administrator or his designated county attorney to negotiate a settlement under the terms and... designated in the county attorney to negotiate a settlement under the terms and conditions discussed in closed meeting.
We have a motion?
Show vote.
All right. Call the question.
The motion passes 6-1 with Mr. Ross voting no.
I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Call the question.